We, as far as the agenda goes, we are adopting whatever amendments we made. Or is there a motion to, from the floor, to adopt whatever agenda it means?
Okay.
Moved by Board Member Hope, seconded by Board Member Messenger, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Kennedy's here, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close, okay, it passes the gen unanimously. This time, we're going to proceed for a shade meeting. I think we have Mr. W.C. here, and that doesn't have, has a lot of different meanings. But, so, we have to lock the doors and kick everybody out. Do I have a script on this? Okay.
It's right here.
Okay, thank you. The school board will now hold a shade meeting in order to give guidance to Mr. Bill Kelly, Director of Risk Management, on the evaluation of claims or offers or compromise of claims presented to Florida Statute 768.28.16C. The meeting... And I think the attorney that was involved with that case handled it quite well, and it sounds like Ms. Yuri has decided that, you know, she's told her client that, you know, I get you something, I'm gonna get out of here, and so, I think it was, I think we got a deal, so. All right, are we ready to proceed? Okay. We're going to now close the shade meeting and reopen the workshop to the public. See, the public's already here. Are there public comments? Has anyone signed up for public comments? I turn it over to...
I think there was.
To Vice Chair Messenger.
Thomas Panasini. Going twice. All right, that is it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. We'll go on to reports and presentations. Am I missing something?
Yeah, the people to give that report and presentation.
Our internal auditor is missing.
Okay. Before, the internal audit report. Any word on where our internal auditor is?
I do not know. We are, just had Mike Barber will be down here momentarily, he can start his presentation.
Okay.
Ms. Boyce, you can also alert Mr. Sauer, we could go ahead and move him up if you would like.
Welcome. You missed out on the two-hour closed meeting, but...
Two-hour closed meeting?
Yeah, we, somehow we stumbled through it, and...
Are you, is there a...
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Oh, okay, sorry, that's okay, that's okay. I can be kidded.
Now, we're right, we're presently listening to the internal audit report.
Oh.
If you're, if you think your hearing's bad, it's because really, he's not saying anything right now.
Michelle's got, like, a schedule today. She's staying on schedule.
She is.
But she's not, and it's not her fault.
I know.
Oh my goodness. I thought we were more popular than that, but...
Did we get through the...
Really, it's only Charlie that's popular.
What?
Yep.
I mean, think of all the name nominations for the high school that had Charlie in it, you know? It was him, it's all him.
We've made it through this process without me, without me being nominated, though.
How do you all feel about...
You don't know that yet, we're gonna see the name nominations when Johnson-Wakeland, you don't know yet.
Name nomination.
You don't know.
Is Mike on his way?
Charlie Kennedy K-8 School, that's what's gonna be up.
Can you check to see if Byron Shin's okay?
Charlie A. Kennedy.
Okay.
Dr. Grusso? Doctor, hi, this is Michelle, I'm checking if you're okay and on your way to the workshop. Okay, I don't see, okay, I'll give her a call, thank you.
Gina-Dash Matt Messenger. K-8, K-8 IB.
No. Definitely not that.
Dr. Grusso will not be here, Ms. Vedder is supposed to be giving the presentation.
Okay, do we have a phone number for her?
I do, I'm following you right now.
Oh, so we really, we haven't really done anything yet?
We have the executive session.
We have an executive session.
We settled a work claim, work comp claim.
Oh, okay, that's the one we talked about before?
No.
No.
We can't, we can't talk about it. Oh, these, this is not, this is not... This is open now. It's open, we can't talk about it. So we already had a shade meeting?
So the first rule is you can't talk about it.
Efficiency of it all is made.
And the second rule?
Fight club in shade sessions.
It's the same rule.
And it was supposed to start at 1:30?
Either way, I already give it all.
Was that, yep, I'd go ahead and roll the first one out.
I agree.
So we can try to stay on target.
Hi, Don.
Congratulations.
Don, can I give you a hand?
Okay, so we didn't start at three, we started at 1:30.
We need Kelly to help you.
Yeah, we, we could have had the meeting at the Tip Top Cafe, you know?
Okay, hit, hit me with a little bit of...
At where?
Tip Top Cafe, yeah. She didn't know anything about that, the amount of people.
I don't know, I don't know what that is.
There used to be a little bar down the street.
Oh.
By the railroad track.
Yeah, we, we did do a temporary password. I don't know how to change it, but I remembered it.
VT40.
Thank you.
Later, I mean, I figured, I figured it out. Thank you.
Will join Mr. Sauer first?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, if I, hearing no objections, we'll, we'll move forward with that report from Mr. Sauer. Would that be all right, any problems?
Oh my gosh, wow.
Get the one I just gave you and use this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is the one you're gonna need from your account.
Okay.
Here comes Mr. Barber.
Interesting.
Okay. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Would, are you, would you be willing to go ahead and, you know, discuss with us the name nominations for renaming Johnson-Wakeland School?
Sure, absolutely, let me just... Okay, renaming of Johnson-Wakeland, just a brief summary of how we got to where we're at right now. The policy that is under is 7320, and the applicable language is in red, and it just states that if we're renaming a school, then the school board needs to allow a period of time, and not less than six months, for community involvement deliberation, discussion, and debate prior to taking action. Okay, the school board initiated the renaming process of Johnson-Wakeland on October 23rd, 2018. We placed a legal advertisement on that same day in the Bradenton Herald. Our Office of Communications, Family and Community Engagement, sent out a media release on October 31st to all newspaper and TV outlets throughout the Tampa Bay area. The renaming process was posted on the homepage of our district website, as well as all our social media sites. It's been on our website continuously since that time, and we held a town hall meeting at Johnson-Wakeland on November 14th, 2018, to discuss the renaming process and to take name nominations at the school and with the school community. Nominations could be submitted by email, they could be mailed to us, they could be personally delivered, or, again, we took name nominations at the town hall meeting there at the school. As of this morning, at 11:00 a.m., we had 65 different name nominations. So, I believe you all have copies of this, correct?
We do.
Okay. So you see the different nominating, name nominations, they're listed here, and that's where we're at.
We had Mr. Chairman for a comment.
Yes.
We, we all...
Board Member Hope.
We all received an email this morning from Cindy Spray, making the, making a nomination for Elwood Park, which I guess is the area around the school, and I don't see that one. Is, is Elwood Park on it?
I see the name of that she submitted, was Elwood Park Community School, and it's in her comments.
Oh, okay, oh, I don't see it on the screen here, okay. Thank you. Got it.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Lot of good, good suggestions here, a lot of funny ones, too. I just wanted to express my preference for something that includes both Johnson-Wakeland and K-8, and perhaps IB. But I would, that, that would kind of be my minimum, you know? I, I would like to see us retain both names, or Rogers-Johnson-Wakeland, something like that. I know the Rogers family is still very much invested in Manatee County schools, so, I mean, we, we have plenty of time to think about this, but I just wanted to express that, that preference, so.
Okay, Vice Chair Messenger.
I was at the event, the, when the, this all started, the kickoff or whatever, however you want to tell, town hall, thank you. And I, I think there was a lot of desire to make sure that, that the name Johnson stayed in the title. Some people brought up at that meeting that they didn't want to see what happened to North River and then Parish Community, they didn't want to see that happen again, and I explained to them, you know, the most important thing that they can do is show up and vote and, and come and speak and make their voice heard the first time, because I think that's my feeling of what happened with North River is, you know, we chose something based on the votes, and then later on, there was a lot of uproar, and I really don't want to see that happen again, and I'd rather there be the uproar now than after we pick something. So I would just encourage as many people as possible to come, speak their mind, email us, and I said it that night, I said the exact same thing that night, like, if you don't want that to happen, speak out now, that makes our job easier, because then we hear what you have to say, and we want to name the school whatever the community wants. So, that is it.
Okay, those are, that's great advice, Vice Chair Messenger, too. I hope our media picks that plea up, you know, this is the time to speak up, let your desires known, and we certainly take everybody's, you know, thoughts, considerations into considerations. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, excuse, Board, Board Member Golden.
Mr. Chair, I'm not so sure how many of us were a part of the initial changing of the name from Louisa R. Johnson to Johnson-Wakeland. Was anybody on this board at that time? Can anybody give us any?
I don't know if it has officially, that's really been officially done, that's what this is.
That's what we're doing now.
Right now, it might say that, but really, it's according to, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but according to how we report to the state, there are two separate numbers, and there technically are really two separate schools on that campus right now, and this is really the combination of making it into one. So I don't really think a decision has been made yet until right now, that's what this is, I mean, and not even right now, whenever this, I think it's in May, whenever that decision is made. So that decision really hasn't been made yet, that's this, what, that's what is before us.
So, in spite of the impression that the name of this school is Johnson-Wakeland, that is not the fact?
There is two separate schools, Johnson and Wakeland, and I think that's why it's, it is now, right now, there's both on the building, yeah.
I'm, I'm not trying to parse words, I want to know, is the school named Johnson-Wakeland?
No, there are two schools, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There are two schools, Johnson and Wakeland.
Okay.
Johnson was...
I don't need an explanation.
There's two schools.
Thank you.
Now, given the fact that there are two schools, what is the impetus to turn two schools into one school name?
Okay, Superintendent Saunders, would you like to address this question and concern?
Yeah, yes, sir. One of the things, when we went back and looked at a facility study a few years ago, we, we noticed that we had some empty seats in some locations and some buildings that were in ill repair, so a decision was made to be the most cost-effective to join the Wakeland IB magnet campus with the Johnson middle IB magnet campus, and make it one continuum program of K-8, but it would also alleviate the empty space at Johnson and not cause the district to have to put a considerable amount of money into renovating Wakeland facility for student stations, because there were many facility problems with their foundation, and, and the school was quite old at the time. So they did it for the purpose of rightsizing and making the best use of our space, and the concept was told that they would join on one campus but be separate schools initially, and then they would, after they've joined on one campus, they would go through the process of getting their IB status changed to a K-8, because both of them had a separate IB status. We would then have to go through Mr. Sauer's department and apply to the state to change their MSID number to one school. So we needed to go through a number of steps before we could officially call it One United Front. So all those things have taken place, so this year, I think it's this year, next year, next year, next year, it will be a K-8 facility. So the students and the state will deem that school as a K-8 and not two separate subgroups. So that's why we're now at the point where we need to decide what to officially call the campus, because right now, it's two separate schools using one facility.
Just have a couple more questions. Okay, Board Member Golden.
Thank you. So what will be the status of the Wakeland campus now, as it wa, the, the old Wakeland campus that was...
Yes, sir. The old facility, at, at this time, we deemed that we needed that space for our operational side, and so food service submitted to the state, authorization to use it for their space of their facility, because they didn't have enough space at Matske. So the state approved it, and we have one of our operations department utilizing the Wakeland campus, so that still is our district's, and the name of that school, but it's not a school, it's a facility, is still got the Wakeland named, so, yes, sir, it's still under our domain.
So we now have a Wakeland facility?
Yes, sir.
And we also now have a Johnson-Wakeland campus, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the issue before us is, what are we gonna name the school?
Correct.
On the Johnson-Wakeland campus?
Correct.
Okay, then, because I, too, have just been inundated with calls from the community with respect to the best name for the school. And I would be supportive of a single name, Louisa R. Johnson, International Baccalaureate K-8 School. I think that, that the time for political correctness is not, I'm not particularly moved by that, I'm just, I'm hopeful that we can avoid, as Mrs. Messenger said, the long-drawn-out, protracted back-and-forth that this school district went through for two years. The school started out being named Louisa R. Johnson. The people were not asked if they would consent to it being named Johnson-Wakeland or any variation thereof, and now here we are, about to go forward and do a second naming in the, for the convenience of the district. So I, I'm not, I'm not supportive of that. If we're going to give respect to this great educator in this community, then let that school be named the Louisa R. Johnson School, let the other campus, we have a Matske complex, we will not have a Wakeland complex, apparently, and both names are still lifted up in the school district. I can, that, that, and I, I did take note that on this, of these 65 different names, the Johnson name appears in some variation even with the Wakeland name, I think about 25, 20, 25, 26 times, and then alone, it's about 15, 16 times, so I'm not quite so sure.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board Member Golden, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Reverend Golden, I have two, two points for you, or, after listening to you speak, I, I think, I had not considered that, that the Wakeland name will still be maintained by that Wakeland campus, which, yeah, it could.
I mean, it exists right now.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I, my desire was to maintain that name somehow, so I, I think that's, that's really a good idea. The only, the only thing I would suggest against is including IB in the name, because if down the road, the school loses its IB designation or, or things change, I think K-8 is good to keep, because it will be a K-3 at school, but I would just suggest maybe leave IB off, but it's just a thought, so. But I do appreciate the, the alternate suggestion for keeping the, is that five minutes already?
After 15 minutes.
Oh, for the whole item? Oh, for the whole item?
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So anyway, I appreciate that, Rev, thank you.
Okay. Um, that was our workshop on renaming the school now located at the, uh, I don't know what to call it, I guess the, the Johnson Campus or Wakeland Johnson Campus. Okay. And, uh, this will come up again when we name it, I think we've had some good points brought up.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, um, let's see, keep it moving. We have Mr. Sauer here, ready to go, okay.
I like it. Hello.
Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Okay, um, again, thank you for allowing me to be here and I'm sorry, um, that my committee chair, uh, chairman are not here. Um, we had told them to be here at three o'clock, um, but we're definitely here, so I can go ahead and, and get started. Um, but we, uh, was, we were asked to look at, um, Palm View Elementary um, and add, um, the ability to go to a K eight, but uniquely only do it one grade level at a time per year, which is different than what we've done before. Okay? So, um, we set out to do that and, um, we started our organizational meetings in March after the board approved, um, the beginning and that was, I believe, in the February twenty-second, uh, board meeting, you gave us permission to do that. Uh, we selected our committees and, uh, we met at Palm View, um, had the different schools involved that were, um, going to be affected by this, um, uh, move. We came back last week and we talked to the superintendent with our committee chairs. Uh, we had our maps here with us and that brings us to today, uh, where I will go ahead and inform you of what the committees, um, came up with. Then after today, we will put it out to advertisement in the public so that they'll have their thirty days to, um, bring questions or, um, any comments that they want to make. And then hopefully by the end of May, we can make that so that we can notify parents by the end of the school year if we're going to change this, that they know where their students are going to go, uh, to sixth grade next year. Um, so there's the timeline that we are and, uh, just the whole process. Again, it was on February twenty-second that you guys, um, approved us to go out there. We used, uh, policy fifty-one twenty, over utilization Buffalo Creek, under utilization of Palm View as the genesis of creating this. Um, we, uh, had representatives from the schools and the communities that were affected and then the timeline which I just shared with you. This one's going to be unique and even though we did the same thing where we gave the visual representation of the radius around the school for walkers, I, I do want to let you know right now that Palm View has no walkers. Everybody comes on bus or by parent car. Two major roads, uh, Business forty-one, uh, Highway forty-one or nineteen, and then there's railroad tracks that go right through the community. So everybody is a bus rider or a car rider at Palm View, okay? So that representation that you see on the map is just for what does a mile in circumference look like and who does it include? So there is no busing, I mean, I'm sorry, there are no walkers that will be, um, into this. So there is the current zone and that's the same map that I have out here, uh, with a, um, mile circumference around it. But the whole, um, the whole zone is Buffalo Creek with, when, um, when Lincoln Memorial went to a charter school, uh, the whole area then went to Buffalo Creek. So that's what we've started with. In the enrollment versus capacity, uh, students that live in the Buffalo Creek zone are all of them, fourteen hundred and twenty-nine of them. Okay? The current enrollment at Buffalo Creek is twelve thirty-seven. And their, uh, capacity, and this is their building capacity, is one thousand fifty-three. They do have one portable on campus that accounts for twenty-five students. Or, I'm sorry, twenty-two students it accounts for. Uh, Palm View, three hundred and ninety-two live in the area. Their current enrollment's three seventy-two and their, uh, capacity is seven hundred and thirty-eight, um, that they have room for. So they're well under, uh, capacity. And then that was our starting point there with the representation of Palm View for the sixth grade in that mile radius is the next slide that you would have. Here's where I would normally bring up the captains and let them talk to you, but what we did is we talked with transportation. That was the first, um, group that I went to and said, "How?" Because we're keeping the elementary zone for, um, Palm View the same. We're keeping them the same for Palmetto L, we're keeping them the same. That was the biggest thing that we had to, um, try to convince our parents and our community to understand that we weren't touching the elementary, that we were just doing six, seven, and eight and who it is. Now, six, seven, and eight will touch Palmetto L's kids, will touch Palm View's kids, and will touch a little bit of Tillman's kids. Not very many, but some down in the south part near, um, three and four, uh, what you're looking at in the, um, polygons. There's a little bit of, I'm sorry, two and three, not three and four, but two and three. Uh, there's a few of the Tillman kids that are in that area. So I broke it down and the original one mile radius has twenty-one kids in that. Uh, your sheet says nineteen because it's overlaying everything and I had to do it for one minute. There are actually twenty-one students, not nineteen. Group B and C moved it in because they wanted to go the roads, which was the suggestion of transportation. So they went to Canal Road. That took two students out of that middle, so that's why it's nineteen. Uh, the polygon one is ninety-eight, um, students. Eighty-nine of those students are, um, fall within our race neutral factors, our socioeconomic, uh, factors that we look at. It comes out to ninety-one percent, that's what your numbers mean. Ninety-eight students, eighty-nine students are free and reduce, ELA, I mean, uh, ELL or ESC gifted, non-gifted. So those students are there, comes out to ninety-one percent. Um, the second polygon is a hundred and eighty-three students, a hundred and eighty-one of them meet those same factors for ninety-nine percent. And then, um, three and four were seventy-five, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, seventy-five, sixty-four, and eighty-five. Polygon four, twenty-seven, twenty, seventy-four. Polygon five up north is, uh, four students. One of them meet the, um, non-race factor for twenty-five percent and then seven, four, and fifty-seven. This is just for the sixth graders next year. This does not include seventh grade, two years out, does not include eighth grade, three years out. When I pulled those numbers from next year's fourth graders, which would be two years out, sixth grade, and then the third graders, which would be three years out, sixth graders, the numbers are very, very similar. If I added all three up and I divided by three, it's three hundred and seven, which is exactly the number, um, polygon one, two, and six are. So we divided it by three, so, or I'm going to multiply by three. So each year, you're going to take the same amount of kids and put them into that school, okay, by a zone. So it comes out to three hundred and seven. Committee A, they stayed true to the one mile radius as we come down US forty-one, Highway forty-one from Hillsborough County. They come out, they dipped out from Canal Road just a little bit and then came right straight down Canal Road. So their, their projection, as you can see underneath into the spreadsheet with Buffalo Creek, is that they started out with twelve hundred and thirty-five. Six hundred and twenty-five of those students were of the non-race factors, which was fifty-one percent. When you take out three hundred and nine, because they had two extra students, they stayed in that one mile radius and there was two other students that the other ones did not. It came out of the, uh, total where they, Buffalo Creek would end up with nine hundred and twenty-six students for the sixth grade. Their, um, LS would drop down for their school, down to thirty-six percent. And Palm View would in, would actually decrease with the addition of their sixth graders by two percent from going one hundred percent, um, uh, non-race factor to ninety-eight percent. And then the next year, the numbers would be approximately the same and then the following year, they would be approximately the same. Um, but this is Committee A. Yes, sir.
Board Member Golden.
Yes, sir. What do you mean by non-race factor?
Yeah.
Just explain.
Okay. Non-race factors, what we look at by definition are, um, socioeconomic status, free and reduced lunch. Then we also look at our ELL students. We look at our ESC students, gifted and non. That makes up our non-race factors, those four groups.
So, and I'm just asking...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Probably don't have any control over this, I'm just trying to figure out how you are able to differentiate realistically between the, the race and socioeconomic status?
I, I separate them by what's, um, labeled in the focus. So if a student is a free and reduced lunch student, that's our socioeconomic, they, they get counted. Then if a student is an ELL student, it gets counted. If a student is ESC and he's gifted or she is gifted, it gets counted. And if a student is ESC and they're not gifted, they get counted.
As non-race...
Race factors, yeah, I don't look at the race. Now, later as I go through and I have to report to the state all of our demographics, I then put that in with our race factors when I report to the state. Um, Palm View has this many, uh, white, this many African-American, this many Hispanic, um, this many Asian, you know, I go through that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Board Member Golden.
Yeah, I just want to ask the question that I really want to ask.
Yeah.
In calculating these percentages, did you give any consideration at all to where those children who might not be able to continue attending Lincoln Memorial Academy would be going to? Would they still be going to Buffalo Creek or are they included in some consideration for this Palm View school?
I would say that I didn't take a percentage, but I'm going to tell you with the numbers that are here, I'm going to tell you about sixty to seventy percent of the former students of Lincoln Middle School, not Lincoln Academy, but Lincoln Middle School would be going to this school, Palm View. The, the reason why it's not a hundred percent is because they took an area of students that lived out east and they transported them into Lincoln for demographic purposes. Those students have not been touched, you know, that were the old Lincoln, they are still zoned to Buffalo Creek. We are staying local, um, community school, I've heard that a lot since I've taken this job, is, you know, we're looking at keeping students in their neighborhood, so that's the students that we looked at.
But would it be fair to say though, that the students at Lincoln, what is it, Memorial Academy?
Yeah.
Would now have as their middle school, Palm View as opposed to Buffalo Creek?
Sixth grade to start with and then building each subsequent, uh, each year after that, yes.
That is contemplated in this process?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. This is, um, again, Committee A. If I put up, um, B, I'm all, I'm just going to put up one because B and C are exactly the same. So there was no sense of making two different maps? With the cost of ink.
What, what map are you showing there?
Uh, the same one that is up there right now.
It's up where?
Yeah. It's up on the board. The, the difference by what's up on the board is I did all three committees. This is B and C, B and C are exactly the same. This map is that map.
Okay, I can't see that.
I'm sorry. Does that help you, sir?
Yeah, the audience can see those two, we can't see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, B and C are exactly the same and it's really exactly the same as A except for B and C stayed to Canal Road and that took out two students out of that one mile radius. That is the difference, two students. So, um, as you look at the, uh, spreadsheet that you have that's on the bottom, you'll see that there's two students different, one from three oh nine to three oh seven, but everything else is basically the same.
Yeah, Vice Chair Messenger?
I just had a question about, um, capacity?
Yeah.
Uh, when it comes to Palm View? Okay, we're on the same wavelength, um, scary for you. Um, I think I heard you say, and make sure I'm understanding you correctly, that each year, three hundred more students are going to be added.
Zoned.
Zoned, okay, sorry, yeah, zoned. We don't know where they're going to go, but it's going to be an awesome program, there's an awesome principal there, they're going to want to go there. So, um, if this is only for sixth grade and there's another six hundred kids coming and then they're going to be over capacity considerably, so, and I, and I see that this reduces Buffalo Creek's numbers to something that I think is a far more reasonable number. So that, that part's great, but now I'm worried that Palm View is going to have too much and is there a plan for that down the line or?
I will turn it over to the superintendent because that is out of my area.
Right.
Of, of being able to tell you, you know, what's going to happen because I don't know, but the superintendent has thoughts.
Who's got a plan?
Well, we, we, we try to. Uh, at, right now, we are talking about zoned students. Even if we capture the official zone to Palm View at the number designated at three oh seven, when you take out the choice and hardship that I've already requested to go elsewhere, we're somewhere around two hundred students. So based on past trends of our choice and hardship to other locations, we do not anticipate that to be the case. However, if we do find that we do need to accommodate more space, uh, as you know, north of the river, there's quite a bit of options.
We don't use the word north of the river anymore.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's not in my vernacular.
That, that's...
I do.
Um, the location... North on three oh one, how about that? Over the bridge.
Which bridge?
But, but I, 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 I do think that, that is a very valid point that we are going to have to be mindful of monitoring and, and ensuring that adequate space for facility.
Per year, that's still an initial four hundred and I'll just say, we subtract a hundred so that they're saying there's only two hundred instead of the three hundred gain, then that's still a thousand.
Well, we...
And the capacity is still seven hundred and something.
Seven eighty.
Thirty, seven thirty-eight.
Right, but right now, we have a number of units at the school facility that we would move somewhere else. It, it, one example being we have a lot of pre-K or other student units there that we're putting there to utilize the space. We would go back and evaluate that so that it would accommodate the space for, for what you do need to have there and that we are required to have there.
Okay. My question with hearing that is, I think pre-K is highly important, especially in this area of Palmetto.
Absolutely.
And, and, um, this area of North County. See how I said that? Um, North County, um, but, so I don't want to lose those pre-K units in that area.
You would not.
I mean, even if they went to a different school, I just don't want to lose them in that area, it's very important.
Right. They would, they would be in the area. The great thing now that having a new school open there and we're bringing some of the overcrowded, we were able to expand pre-K to those sites as well. So they would still stay in the area if, even if all of them would not be located at that one facility.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure they stay in that, that, that area because I feel like that's just...
And, and we, we do have a little space there. Um, I, I do think that that would be something that we need to monitor in terms of our long-term plan when we go over the facility study, to be mindful of what, what happens if we end up in a space situation. Uh, but our immediate need is we cannot start the year at Buffalo Creek. We can't even put more portals there.
And I agree with you, and I.
But you're right, but so so it is fixing, it is fixing that problem, but we need to be mindful of the growth or the attendance at Palm View, absolutely, absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I I think that Board Member Golden, you know, brought up something about Lincoln Academy, and, um, you know, there's a lot of what-ifs there. And, uh, this is going to be, Palm View is going to be very popular, being sort of a Wozniak, you know, school. And I can see, you know, people from all over wanting to, you know, be in there. And, um, people maybe who presently prefer going to Lincoln would say, you know, that's that's pretty, pretty good for us, too. And, uh, uh, and it's, there there are, you know, a lot of issues there, which, um, make it difficult for Lincoln to support itself. You know, you have to have the students to have the money to support it. And at some point, um, you know, that school might be a facility that, um, is available, too. So, um, we we wish it the best, but it's, uh, obviously having troubles in times right now. Um, and it, we all are are affected by, you know, that, whatever develops there. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Board Member Hope.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Superintendent, where, what is, what is the anticipated timing of the Blackburn transition to a pre-K through eight?
Well, right now Blackburn is just, we're just looking on the ACE Cambridge.
Right.
Feeder, but right now, we're not, we're not expanding that one.
So it's going to be an ACE feeder, but not a K through eight?
K through five right now.
Okay.
But we do, like I said, we do have some expansion opportunities or options, uh, North County, that, uh, if we do feel that we do need additional space for additional supports, we we will be able to look at those options.
So so given, even with this change going to sixth grade, given the pressures on Buffalo Creek, what what was the balance between only going sixth grade versus going like sixth and seventh? In other words?
I I I think that is what it was. It was, it was giving the school an opportunity to gauge one school, what one grade level at a time, number one. Number two, if we did seventh grade, and some of those students had started at Buffalo Creek, we did not want to move their location. Um, we did not feel that that would be fair, it would be a little disruptive. But but by adding that one grade and and reducing sixth grade, it did kind of right-size Buffalo Creek's numbers, so it put them more at an appropriate staffing level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Board Member Kennedy?
Um, I this, I guess this is an observation in the question in the form of an observation, but even if a sixth grader is still zoned to Buffalo Creek, they will be able to choice into Palm View next year, correct?
Right now.
I I just want to hear you again, I I'm sorry, I didn't.
It kind of related to that question. So let's say we we choose this map, and you've got a student who lives a hundred yards away from Buffalo Creek, but they want to be part of the Wozniak program, they can choice into Palm View next year as a sixth grader, correct?
It all depends on capacity.
Which it looks like they'll have.
Well, we are capping what we're allotting in at a number, so that we do not eliminate space for the students that are zoned there. So the zoned students will get the primary option for attending that program. Now, if there is space on that allotment, um, then yes, but we want to ensure that those that are zoned there have appropriate seats, and and they're not being filled with students that are assigned somewhere else.
So it sounds like just if the if the, sorry, I tore my presentation all apart, but if the if the capacity is seven, the capacity is seven thirty-eight, um, and I'm going back to Gina's number, so probably that cap would be about two hundred students per year, it looks like?
Yeah, li- little over two hundred, yeah.
So there might be some room.
Might, but probably not a lot.
It's what we do with every school. If they're over capacity, th- then, you know, we shut them off. Um, you know, we look at, um, the units that they have, we look at, you know, do they have siblings there? All of that is taken into consideration when it comes to letting a student in from outside of the zone. So, you know, unless there's a change, it will follow the same procedures that we always do.
Or unless it's Lakewood Ranch High School.
I'm sorry.
Unless it's Lakewood Ranch High School.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, uh, Board Member Golden?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to make, I want to get clarification here, that the word in my mind is is cannibalization. And I want to make absolutely sure that nothing that we are planning, that nothing that we are trying to introduce here will result even in the unintended consequence of Lincoln Memorial Academy being cannibalized with respect to its students. I I realize that that's a reality that might come as a consequence of this great school that's going on out there, but I want to make sure that we are on the record here not counting on that to make that a great school.
Can I respond? Okay, I I would just say that we treat all of the charter schools, y- you know, the same, in the fact that they recruit their students. They get those students to come to them, and I'll tell you, you know, as of this morning, when I counted students, Lincoln is not hurting. They're down a little bit, but they're not hurting. Okay, I mean, from what they started with last year versus, you know, where they're going this year.
I just want to follow up on what the Chair was alluding to, and that is that when you talk about the students that are zoned to this school, are you including in that number those students who are able to choose to go to Lincoln Memorial Academy?
Oh, oh, if I counted the students that did not go to a charter school already, because those are not my students, those are the charter school students, I do not put them in our numbers.
Okay.
Okay, they they don't belong to me.
Okay, I, like I said, because I I know this is going to come up again.
Yeah, sure.
That that we are trying to, uh, cannibalize the students at Lincoln Memorial, and that, uh, that, uh, that we are trying to put them out of business. I know I'm, now you, nobody else might not hear this but me, but I'm just being real, and I need to have an answer that I'm comfortable with.
Sure, I did not touch any of their students.
Alright. Uh, Board Member Hope?
Um, that that's an interesting use of terms, and and I'm a strong proponent of charter schools, but, um, charter schools do a pretty good job of, you know, I'm not going to use your term, but marketing to our students and sort of taking them away. But in case you haven't noticed, Florida has set up an education system which in encourages competition. So what we are doing, and the Superintendent is doing, is is elevating programs in that area for choice. And so I'm offended kind of by the word cannibalizing, uh, a charter school, uh, because what we're doing is we're elevating all of our schools in appropriate ways to offer choice to our students. It's competition, that's what we're doing. We we are, we are improving, we are improving the offerings that we make to all students, to all students that reside in Manatee County. We're not cannibalizing, you know, anything, and this is, this is the education system that the legislature has set up, which is an education system of choice, and it's just like the charter schools. I mean, I, we're going to be moving to a, uh, performing arts elementary school. Um, I would hate for someone to say that we were, you know, making sure we didn't cannibalize from MSA by having, uh, Manatee Elementary be a a performing arts, uh, program. So, I mean, I I hope we're not going to go down that path. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, Board Member Hope.
May I ask?
Uh, Su- Superintendent, uh, and then we'll come back to you, Board Member Golden, okay?
Thank you, sir.
River Golden, I just want to reassure you, our primary concern was the overcrowding of Buffalo Creek, and also a support mechanism for Palm View, since they did have a lot of seat capacity there. So we we looked at it from that perspective. It was a win-win for Palm View and those students, but it really also alleviated crowding without us having to build possibly another facility, so we could emphasize our capital dollars on po- on renovating existing schools more so than building new schools at this time.
And. Okay, Board Member Golden?
Thank you. Uh, and Madam Superintendent, I thank you, uh, for that enlightenment, uh, because I have a different opinion, uh, and a different philosophy with respect to public education. Uh, this is not competition, this is not business. This is a sacred duty that we owe to all of the children in this county. And, uh, you got to be careful when you sit up here and say one thing today, especially if it's different than what you said yesterday. Because the reality is that there are people in this community who do believe, uh, that Lincoln Memorial, uh, is not designed to succeed, nor has it ever been assisted in that, and that some of our actions are designed to help it fail. So when I talk with you about my concerns, I'm not making things up, and I'm not trying to, uh, and I call, I use the words that I know, uh, which may not be as many as some of the others of you, but I use what I know. And when you're told they're going to take our students, and they're going to put them in Palm View, and that's going to drive us out of business, that's cannibalization, because of the same students. So what what I, what I'm hearing is that the integrity of this board is such that we are concerned about all students, and particularly all students with respect to public education, not education for profit, and not education for charters that takes away dollars that we so badly need for public education in this county and around this state. So I realize that the political winds might be blowing in a different direction, but that doesn't mean that they're taking us to the destination that we need to go to. And so, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Yes, sir.
Our Board Member Golden, um, you notice on the maps, we don't have pockets. And we anticipate not to have the pockets, you know, next year. I think there's pretty consensus that that's not the best for the students, or the best use of, uh, district resources. And that that will be adding, you know, students to, you know, that area, um, to the Lincoln area, uh, particularly. And, um, so it's it's, I think we all believe that's a good move, the time has come to do that, so thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Board Member Kennedy?
Thanks, Mr. Minor, I just want to address one, um, kind of knock-on effect of this that is going to be positive for Palmetto High School, and that is, um, the, um, not just the development of Blackburn of, um, of an of an ACE K through five, but, um, with high-performing STEM students coming out of, uh, this Palm View K through eight, that will be a benefit to the academic achievement at Palmetto High School, and we all are very well aware of, uh, the activism taking place on the other side of the Manatee River.
Thank you.
Um, and so I I just wanted to highlight that, Dr. Hope and I were there last night with, uh, with the group, and, um, heard the presentation and heard some more of their concerns. And, um, I, you know, as always, I mean, these are good conversations to have, and we have differences of opinion, um, but I just want to finish this with focusing on a positive for Palmetto and and all of our students.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Okay, I think all of our questions have been, uh, addressed and, uh, our concerns, and, uh, we thank you for bringing us up to date on where we're going and making this a, you know, better school visit.
Was he supposed to give us a recommendation as to which of the three, or is that what we are to do later? Or the Superintendent?
It will be noticed for thirty days for public comment, so then the last meeting in May, before school is over, we will come with a recommendation for board action, so that way, whatever the board decides, we can notify students before they leave for the summer.
Alright. Thank you very much, and thank the committees, and it's a lot of work involved with the committees and studying, and, um, it's nice to have, you know, di- all, you know, different plans that serve the students and makes it a tough choice. Okay, um, the, I think we go back to I, we'll go back to reports and presentations, does that sound okay? Uh, I see that Mr. Shin's here with Gina, and so are you all set to? I asked Michelle, are we doing on time?
Beautifully, Mr. Minor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shin, thirty minutes, and we're going to give Ms. Better thirty minutes, and we are right on schedule.
Okay, and if you try to go over, you know, you're going to have Michelle to deal with, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First, I want to apologize for being late. It was a fast shade meeting. Dr. Grusso wanted to apologize for not being here, she's at a family reunion out of town, and so we have Ms. Better, who is our Vice Chairman, who will be giving their report immediately following. I have three different reports we will go over today. And I wanted to thank, uh, management for their involvement with this. There is a culture that's shifting here, which is a good thing, and I think you're seeing some of the qualities that, uh, Mr. Wagner has in building teamwork, and being a collaborator, and being a great listener. So we've already had one report in a shade meeting where we went over the details with the full board several weeks ago, and at the Audit Committee, we went over the public version of that with Serge and Ms. Better Jorgensen. And so that is in your materials. Um, the second page of it goes into a summary, and I'll hit the highlights, the vulnerability management, and the status of that is on, on target asset management risk assessment, that's on target passwords, rules, and permissions. Uh, that is working, but falling, it has, and as Serge put it, we were much further behind, but with the additional resources, they've been catching up. So we're, we're on the verge of being caught up in the passwords, rules, and permissions area. Data loss prevention, um, and the detection, uh, that is, still got a little ways to go, and then backups. And the backup area with servers, and that area is, um, needing additional work, and they are putting the resources on it. So that's a quick summary of that. The second item was Agittec, um, and I'm going to read parts of this for the record. We were asked to review the process of the contract renewal of Agittec Solutions that took place in the fall of twenty eighteen. This review did not cover the process surrounding the initial contract established with Agittec. In addition, the State of Florida Auditor General released an operational audit that was dated April eleventh of two thousand nineteen. That covered several areas. The first two findings were regarding the ERP system and contracts involved with providing services to the district. We attached to the back of the report, and I just added the second recommendation today to it. Dr. Grusso really wanted to have the second item also on there. But the first part we did was, we looked at the renewal of the contract. This contract started in twenty sixteen in September, and during twenty eighteen, it was up for reannual. The contract expired on September fourteenth, so the board took action on August thirty-first. During this renewal, there was a two-year period, and we later on were asked to review the actual payments that were made during that first two-year period. And we have attached to our report in Attachment A and B. You will find in A, we actually went and took every invoice received by Agittec during this period under this contract, and they exceeded two hundred thousand. When we looked at the contract itself, it had hour limitations, but not a dollar cap. However, the summary that was given to the board showed that there would be a max cap of two hundred thousand. So it, from our calculations, it showed that we had overpaid them in the first period. We went and met with Ms. Groot, who heads purchasing, and she had showed me a list of what she believed were the payments for the periods, and that's in Attachment B. I asked her where she got her information, and she got it out of J.D. Edwards. And this was something they would manually put together under the old system. And as you can tell by this, they showed that they only had a hundred and sixty-two, so they're well with under underneath that two hundred thousand limit. However, because they didn't capture and they did not trace back directly to the invoices, they were showing that they were gonna go over in the second period. There is a provision that allows the superintendent to add $49,999 without going to board approval, and extend that contract. That was done at a later point in time, but not for this particular period. So we are recommending here that the board cover... The board cover letter should reflect the terms included in the contract. In addition, the first-year invoice has exceeded the $200,000 cap. So we're recommending that you have this reviewed by your attorneys, and whether or not this should be going back for a credit or a refund from Agittec for this first period of payment. Then we were asked to review the incomplete RFP that went out for consulting services. I'd like to read this. CRI at the direction of the Audit Committee was asked to review the sealed file regarding the RFP for consulting services regarding assistance with ERP implementation. We noted that the file was sealed when we arrived. Re-inventoryed items in the file and the verbal representations that were made prior to the review of the documents was consistent with our review of the documents in the file. The district properly notified the parties that had proposed that the RFP had been canceled effective August 10th of 2018. The contract was then modified and it increased, and it included an increase in the scope of services to help in providing development and support to the DOE reporting and implementation of a new employee recruiting system using a PeopleSoft replaced Taleo and assist in the review, evaluation, and development of a grant solution. This modification also included a higher monthly rate of $70,833, where the original and extended contract included a lower monthly rate. And by the way, in the middle of that, there was a, when you moved from $200,000 and went to $395, and then it went from $395 on up. So in conclusion, according to Florida law, and I'm not an attorney, but according to what I'm seeing in your policies and the statutes, the school board was able to extend and modify the contract as they had done. But what Dr. Grusso and the Audit Committee wanted to make reference to was that there were findings by the Auditor General, and their first two findings, they talked about improvements and enhancements that need to be made in your purchasing protocol with regard to services. And that's what we did as an addendum. In review of the monthly billing, we noted that the invoices for the first period were, exceeded the $200,000, which I noted in the first finding. The second item, the modification of scope and fees, was approved effective on November 13th, and it was signed on December 11th by Scott Hopes, the board chair, when it was approved. That document set the billing rate to $70,833 per month. The invoice dated December 19th, invoice number AGI1218, included billings of $70,833, and it was for the following timeframe, September 16th of 2018 through October 15th, October 16th through November 15th, and November 16th through December 15th. So you're talking about three months. As the modification was not approved until November 13th, the rate for the month September and October and the beginning of November should have probably been at the lower rates that were approved under prior board approvals. So our recommendations. The review of the detail of the payments made to Agittec do not tie the invoice dates that led to the overpayment for the first contract year. So the district needs to review processes and controls around posting and accurate dates. Second item. We believe a request for refund of $76,000 from the vendor should be addressed for the contract period of September 17th. This should be analyzed by council with a report back to the board for recommendations. Finding four, we recommend the district should review scope changes when payment amounts are increased in order to have a properly authorized written agreement to support the new terms for proper approval of payment. Number five, we recommend the district add language to contracts to allow the district to be reimbursed for overbilling. And number six, we recommend the district pay close attention to the budgeted items for expenditures that when an invoice is rendered for prior periods, then additional sign-off is included to verify this expense is properly budgeted, and the contract is consistent with the period invoiced, to avoid any confusion and proper compliance with your district budget. So that is maintained. So there are several findings wrapped around that in Agittec. And you have, I wanted to have a conversation with the board. Not just read you our recommendations, but also to include management in the conversation so that you can feel the changes that are happening. So like on the first finding, that happened in the days of J.D. Edwards. And in the current software, current system, as Reverend Golden has stated to us, under the new system, the automation should prevent, once they put in a cap, it should limit it in that particular contract period or fiscal year, depending on how it's set up. So that should have an automated feature that should work going forward. But it's still doesn't address, you know, what we need to do for the back period that was, that was paid. And then with regard to the contracts, when we're dealing with these large contracts, the attention to the detail and having some oversight. You have some wonderful checklist and sign-offs for the things that are brought before you, that they're signed off by legal, they're signed off by the department heads, they're signed off by purchasing. But when you go back to prior periods, we need to probably put an extra step in there. And obviously, you have to have it in the budget to pull it off. So otherwise, you bring a lot of, you check a lot of boxes that get the auditors excited. So that's why the last point is in there, too. So, any questions?
I do. I have a question.
Okay, Mr., board member Golden?
I wasn't here for a lot of that that was going on. You and I've had this discussion before. And I guess I'm really asking it because it sounds as if we have found a solution to a problem that we did not know we had until after the fact.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, hindsight is always 20-20. And so I guess, and I'll say it because I wasn't here. Is there anything in your report that alludes to or that in any way implies that this board was, I can't think of any other word right now, but non-functioning during this time? They did what they did, and they did it with the information that they had. And apparently, they relied on mistaken information. Is that a fair statement?
That's... I've been at some of the board meetings, and I believe that they're acting in good faith with the information they're given and with the representations that have been made by the appropriate parties. Whether or not is as transparent as some people would like or vetted completely is a judgment call. But I think that times are improving here in Manatee County at the school district. Transparency is improving, and I think that they're listening. And I think the attitude of ownership and accountability is improving. And we'll talk about some more of that in the ERP section, which we're making some recommendations around. And it all comes back to the classroom, and we can't let the classroom down. And we have to support them efficiently and effectively.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, board member Golden. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shin.
So that's the Agittec issue. And on that third item, the third area of the modification in the payment for those prior periods, I believe that the board should look into some recommendations of what they want to do with that period of payment. We're not attorneys, but it needs to be addressed.
But you said we needed to...
I think you should...
With counsel.
Your counsel.
Get a legal recommendation.
I think that they need to give you some direction. It's above our pay grade.
Okay.
As you can appreciate. Okay, I'm halfway there. Only took me two hours with the Audit Committee on this one. I got fifteen minutes, so we'll move along. I wanted to start with, so it's gonna be abbreviated, but drill me down if you need to. To start off with, PeopleSoft is currently in use in three other districts in Florida. We have Seminole County, Lee County, and Palm Beach. USF, who is a higher ed, is also using it. There are places that use it and use it very efficiently and effectively. We do have a significant amount of error logs. We have had some issues with proper management of the consultants around the PeopleSoft implementation with the hire of Nick Choate and Scott Hanson. The district has moved forward with hiring the right parties or some qualified people, and you'll hear me talk about hiring more. We were asked to go in and look at payroll, benefits, payroll, taxes, and P-cards in our normal course of our internal audit. Management knew at the time they had issues in payroll. They were very, very transparent, so I want you to get a feel for this. They knew we were being asked by Audit Committee. They knew they weren't ready to get a clean opinion. But they also were looking for some answers, too. And so the transparency, that was a big step. That necessarily wasn't the case a year or two ago, okay? So I think that's important to understand. So it's important also for the district and for management that the Auditor General and the state had asked the district to look into a new ERP system. And during the fit gap analysis, the implementation consultant, Cyber, were here. And during that process, defining the scope of the implementation, they expanded and made several changes orders that were supported by the prior administration to add many of the modules that are now included in this. You'll hear us talk later about that. The ERP team self-reported that configuration in certain areas, but not limited to grants and W2s, were not complete at GoLive. But they had stated that they would be in place by year end, and they were not. Cyber was not extended, and then Agittec was modified, as I just spoke about. And because of that change order, or that change, if you will, that impacted the district. Even though you had a changing of the guard, it still impacted at a very critical time at year end. So until recently, I mentioned the Scott Hanson and the Nick Choate hires. It's our opinion that you need to have a governance committee. This is a committee made up of leadership, along with a board member. This kind of goes hand in hand with the accountability bill that was pushed through. And it's been passed by the Senate and the House, and it's set to be signed by the governor. And this is all about giving transparency to the taxpayer. And that to show that the people that are here, that you're spending money with, are held accountable, that they're doing it in the right timeframe and under the right fee structure. And as I mentioned, accountability and ownership has moved here. The needle has moved in a positive way. But I think at this point in time, we need to take it to a whole nother level. And I think that this organization has spent a considerable sum of money. And we know that other people have got it and got it running well. And it's about time we get this job finished. So we're recommending that you put together this governance committee. You currently have a committee that was working internally. And there's times when management and your internal audit might disagree, and that's healthy. And we debate it at time from time to time. But in this particular case, I think it's important to note you'll have your tactical groups that'll handle different areas, like MTC, finance, HR, Matske, which might be busing or food services. But all that is integrated in this system. And then who's gonna be held accountable to make sure it's getting cleared? Who's overseeing the timeline? Who's overseeing the budget? Who's holding those parties accountable? And I think it's time that we get into a systematic reporting to show that this will get done and it will get finished. And it's no longer acceptable just to add another contract. But that there needs to be that finality to getting some of the issues fixed. Now, the district and the superintendent are just as certain that this has to be fixed. And we're two and a half months before fiscal year end. A lot is, a lot of pressures on this district right now to get this right. So to promote the oversight, transparency, and accountability, we recommend the district establish a governance team, including a school board member as lead, and comprised of at least five members. But I'd like to say, don't get it too large. It's hard to manage. This governance team would meet weekly until the project has reached stability, and the meeting should include an Audit Committee member for monitoring. And I added in the last sentence, MTC should have a separate team reporting to the governance team, since it has some unique issues. As far as application resources, I want to say there's difference between an IT person and a teacher, and we all understand that. And then there's the people that are doing payroll, et cetera. And that's eighty, roughly eighty percent of your costs are payroll or payroll-related. Somebody's got to communicate their needs with IT. And that bridge has been various people. We've now hired Scott and Nick. We have a team of BAs and support team underneath that. That BA team has shrunk from ten and twelve people down to five in a period of time where time is of the essence. It's hard. It's real hard when you talk to Mr. Wagner to find experienced PeopleSoft people out there. We're saying that if you can't hire them, at least we need to hire a consultant to fill the gap, to get the closure. I was just meeting today with Tammy Taylor, going over some sales tax information. And she said, "Byrne, it would be great if we just had one person assigned to finance full-time just to help us bird dog our issues," my term, not her dog, not her term, that's my term. "Just to take care of the issues that are happening in the area." And I'm sure every single department feels that same way. We have people from Agittec that are coming and going, helping out in various places. They're very qualified people, just not enough of them. The grants area and MTC have limited dedicated support, and both of these business functions have year-end reporting that will impact the funding received in the next fiscal year. So we're putting a highlight on those areas. There are also two areas of the software, which, because of their complexity and because no other district in the state of Florida is using, like MTC is using, PeopleSoft creates a problem in customization. So we'll talk about the customization in a minute. But our second recommendation was the district needs to develop a written resource plan, an organization chart, to include project managers and to support the teams for the various areas, which would include an area lead, the business analyst, and additionally, a report specialist for each of these areas. So think of it as a go-team. These are the teams that would head up these various areas. Right now, we have some of that. It's not as fully developed in order to get to the finish line. So we're gonna need to backfill some of these positions. Changes have been documented, but we'd like them to be more thoroughly documented because as changes are made, when you find something is not following along like it did the last iteration, you need to go back to that documentation. So one thing is you're making rapid changes like they're doing. So one thing is you're making rapid changes like they're doing. It's very important to double down and just remind people thorough documentation is very, very important. Leave a trail of why we did what we did and where was it when it was working. And to make sure these are tested in a test environment before applying to the production environment. And they're in the middle of doing some of that right now with the retro pay. So back to the customization. There was quite a bit of customization that was done in the application in MTC. And with that, the pace of the application needs to be improved. The customization has created a situation where we believe you need to stand back and evaluate where MTC is and what it's going to take to be successful. So we later on make the reference having an expert give you a path to success with where the issues are. There's some parts of it that are working very well, and some areas that cannot see the path to success, at least from management's perspective. And like everything else, if you don't have a vision and a path, you're blind in the dark, and we need that vision and help the district. There are customizations that are made outside of PeopleSoft that should be reviewed. An appropriate action taken to protect the application. When you're doing modifications outside of PeopleSoft, and then you go and you put in an update over the top of it, it could have consequences on the users and the reports. Another recommendation, then, district needs to ensure that changes are properly documented and all testing steps are completed prior to promoting the changes to production. Sign-offs should be kept in evidence and completed unit regression and user testing is done. Item number six, application support needs to be available for all levels of development. These should be resources assigned to support that is focused on simple issues and promoting queries to the production environment. A plan to provide adequate support needs to be developed and submitted to the governance team for approval. Meaning, the governance team needs to be sitting back saying, can they be successful with these resources? Or have we really hamstrung them? Think of it this way. You've got people working. We visited all three of your major sites. And when you, when you leave this particular building and you go out, they, they sometimes can feel like they're on an island and they're on their own. They put in their requests, they put in their items. But it's important to note that we're hearing them and that we recognize the issues. And that's some of the strength that the new superintendent and Mr. Wagner are building into your culture here. However, we still need to do more of it. And there's a lack of resources necessary to get us over the hump at June 30. Next finding is the district should develop a plan to implement the patch, PUM seven, including district-wide business testing in the test environment. So there is a patch out there. It hadn't been cut in, and they're concerned about what would happen when they do cut it in. So it's something that's out there. You're, they're aware of it, and you need to be aware of it. That should have an expectation. You should be able to ask them, when do you expect to do it? What's it going to impact? When is the most appropriate time? Do we need to do it before year end, after year end, before budgeting, after budgeting, et cetera? Establishing controls. The pace of the application development needs to be improved in order to meet the business deadlines. That's for this area. Same R three, stated again. Number eight, a central list of all manual data entry or processes should be compiled by the district while corresponding lists and mitigating controls are developed. Each item on the list should include a designated person to be responsible for the progress in that area. There's so many areas that are currently being manually done, that your controls are out and the documentation don't exist. So this is to prevent audit findings and to beef up your controls. The data that's going in needs to be reviewed. So one of the recommendations we put here is a central list of all data review should be compiled by the district. This list should include the reports or audits that the data will impact. The district should prioritize the list of data to be reviewed and determine a person responsible for monitoring each item. This list should be submitted to the governance team for review and ongoing monitoring. Reports. There's over two hundred reports that exist that are available, and the district purchased two reporting tools in approximately 2016 Envision and BI Publisher. According to the district, during the implementation period, Cyber explained that they did not need to use these tools, and the query applications would provide the solutions. Our recommendation is make a list of the reports by area, and district only also needs to prioritize the listed developments. We support the district to provide resources, both internally or contracted. They're focused on developing the reports needed to support the business function. We talked about MTC. We talked about the short-term contract with a consultant responsible for the design of this customization application. The resources should be assessed and planned adequately staffed this area with either internal or external resources to support as soon as possible. The district should develop an ongoing training plan to train the district personnel on the use of PeopleSoft. Now, I want to hit contract pay, and I got twenty-five seconds, but this is why. Save the best for last. We believe the district should consider, there's so many things that drive into payroll. And you got all these benefits, and if somebody's getting paid on a regular basis, the benefits are accrued. If you have somebody that's a teacher and also a coach for soccer, and they also do something else, or you have a school bus driver that then does another function also, the benefits and how they all are accrued and where they get sent, and everybody has a different pay on the contract pay area. So we believe the district should consider converting to payroll every two weeks, which would work out to twenty-six pay periods per year. And we believe the board should support the superintendent to negotiate with the union to simplify this. It'll make for better clarity. For the people getting paid, it's easier for them to understand it so they don't get confused. It'll cut down the phone calls, and it'll obviously help the accounting, the people in benefits, the people in payroll. It's something that is so obvious, and it was right there, and when we were talking, it was just like boom. So we, we strongly recommend that you consider that and give her.
Thank you very much.
Chair, Mr. Chair, do you mind if I say a few things?
Pardon me?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Okay, let, sure. We're, we're about two minutes over right now for this section, but let's, let's give two minutes for, you know, Q and A here.
Well, I think this is a highly important topic. I'm sorry that we're running over, but this is, this is of a major magnitude here, so.
I didn't hit P cards, but we'll get there.
I, I read everything before I came here that you sent. But I think what you harp on a lot in your report is a timeframe for completion.
Absolutely.
And so I think for me, that's, that's a big ask I have. It sounds as if a lot of this really needs to be completed before the end of the fiscal year, is what I'm hearing.
My position was realistically, we'd like to be able to get some things finished before year end. But practically speaking, you've got some changes that might take upwards of twelve months to get in place. But we'd like to tackle some significant issues before year end. And I think you're looking at three people over here in your management team that love the fact that getting a deadline, they want this done too.
Right, and I mean, like I said to you on the phone the other day, I don't know anybody that has more grit than Mrs. Saunders.
That's right.
And I mean that in a very genuine way. I, I really don't. And so I have a lot of faith in that. But that, that is a big concern for me. And so I think for me, I'd like to know how the board, how the district's going to respond to this and a timeframe that we think some of these things can get done. One of the other things is that you brought up the governance team. I, I guess I'd ask, and I can ask later at the board meeting, but I'd like to ask that we put that as a workshop item so that we can really talk about that and get that going, because it seems like that should have been done yesterday. I can, I can really see in your report the value of that. Just so that, you know, we meet every two weeks, but that, that group could meet, ma- maybe not as frequently, but could or as frequently, whenever it's more necessary than our every two weeks. I can see a lot of benefit to that fluidity and that flexibility. I have other things that I'll suggest at the workshop, but coming from this. But that, that was the one thing that I wanted to say, and I just wanted to say that I guess my big question is how is the district going to respond to this? But I, I assume that we'll have some sort of written response, or?
Okay.
Let me have just a brief, a brief conversation. I, I can tell you, the district assumed July one, when we went live, it, it was ready.
Right.
So as you know, as we've gone through each cycle of operation with the district, we've discovered more things that aren't. So one of the things that we're doing right now, and Mr. Cosmac had also started this before he left. He had recommended, in some cases, that we looked at the other three districts. When they went live, they did not roll out twenty-eight modules. Part of our probably in retrospect shortfall was we bought too many to roll out of the gate all at one time. So all of them were not properly completed. So I do know that we do have some folks here from Seminole County that are working on our HR study right now, our FADS team. And I was speaking with one of them, and of course, they started with eleven. So our first analysis this week coming up will be which ones do we really need to go back and, and focus on to get implemented? Because trying to fix twenty-eight at one time might not be a lofty goal either. So let's focus on what we should have table a couple over here. I've also, I had met with another IT firm that does have extensive work with PeopleSoft, Accenture. Met them, Dr. Hopes and I had met them in Tallahassee. They've come down for a meeting. I've had correspondents back and forth to see about hiring a couple of short-term consultants that I can divide some of the work that Agittec is doing versus this company. Our maintenance provider is keeping the airplane in the air. I will tell you, if it weren't him making the script for W twos, we couldn't have paid our taxes because it wasn't built. If he hadn't have been able to write a script to pay retro pay and raises, it wouldn't have happened because it wasn't built. So unfortunately, he's trying to keep the airplane in the air, but we have many things that have to go back and be fixed, and we don't have time to do both at the same time. So I've already consulted with this company. I am hoping to have it writing within the next two weeks. Our action plan of moving forward, and this is the short term. Then we are going to need to have a consultant firm, possibly this one, it was one of the assessments I've asked, to come in and assess all of our system to say in their mind what parts are not properly functioning, what it will take, and a timeline, and a price tag that they assume. And again, this is an outside firm with a third eye looking in. The thing that the board and the district has to be mindful of, we cannot use any capital dollars in correcting this problem now. Once we went live, any dollars we put into the correction will come out of our operational budget. And one of the things that we were cited for by the AG was the district should have come up with a rubric of what we were looking for and then looked at possibly an RFQ of different services to meet that goal versus, oh, here's a company that can do X, Y, Z. Let's just give them a contract, et cetera. So we're probably going to need to do a little bit better job of our due diligence before we move forward. But we will have some strong recommendations on how to correct it for the long term. We're functioning. We're just not operational as the system should be working.
Thanks.
Board Member Kennedy?
I'll make this quick, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chen, I just have a quick question. I, I agree with Gina. Probably this, this governance team idea is probably best suited for a workshop, but I just want to kind of flesh out the idea real quick. So you said, keep it small, keep it to five, to include a board member, an Audit Committee member, and the superintendent, and who else would be on that team?
I think I wanted to leave some flexibility, but I think it should be people in leadership, five to seven.
Five to seven, okay.
Get to fifteen and twenty, it gets, we want it to be
Yeah.
not tactical in nature, but more of making sure they're holding the rest of the team accountable, that they see the big picture, that if there's a problem going on, that the board has a connectivity to it. So you're staying connected, the same way the Audit Committee has on these big projects. We assign one of the Audit Committee members to kind of embed with us, embedded in the flow of information, so we don't have to call a meeting and talk about it. They can move a little bit until the next regular meeting. So who else would be on it? It would be like your IT head.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't want to go down to the weeds in it because we can do it at a workshop, but, but I think one of the things that we learned out of the kind of ongoing autopsy of the, of the project is that one of the, one of the shortcomings is we really didn't have ownership within, I, I'll say, I'll put it this way, like within a module. And so I, we, we can talk about it later, but maybe part of that governance team could be somebody who is included in that weekly discussion, who is there, feels valued, and is like, I am going to take ownership for this module. If we decide we're going to, we're going to focus on eleven or twelve to start, granted, now your committee's getting big, but, but we can come to that later. One detail that jumped out at me, and I said this last week in the meeting, I just wanted to say it again to the full board. But the recommendation about the patch, there, there was two incidents in the report where that reads to me as kind of blinking yellow. And I asked the superintendent this last week, and I just, again, I just want to do it for the, for, for the full board. Could we by the, you know, fiscal year ends June thirty, could we by the first or second meeting of May have a timeline for how we're going to get that, get that patch implemented?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I just, I just want to
Sure.
do that publicly with the whole board in the room. So, because that, that really was a significant item that, that jumped up to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chen. Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Golden, Board Member Golden?
Yes, sir. Chen, some of the changes that you're thinking are going to be needed, I believe you just said, could take up to twelve months. Is that from today, or is that from the rollout, or is that from January? What, what are we looking at?
You're talking about twelve months from when you get a team on the ground to assist you. That's what I'm hearing from your team in discussions with management, realistically. I think that there's some areas that can be fixed with training and user error, and those are low-hanging fruits. And getting the reports to, so they can have reports for year end. But I think that some of the bigger issues that they need to tackle might take upwards of twelve, like the grants. They have to have a short-term fix, but there's three modules for grants. It just doesn't make sense.
But, but the point I'm, I'm trying to make is that the governance team, that you would want to superintend this work.
I think you need to look at a twelve-month period.
Twelve-month period of time.
And if it happens faster, God bless them.
Okay.
But I, just realistically, usually it takes two to three years for a system to roll into some kind of a really nice seasoned path.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chen. Okay, the next is the Audit Committee report. Update. Barbara, will you introduce your name?
My name is Barbara Vetter. I'm the vice chair of the Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you.
And this report was written by Dr. Agruzzo, who is not available today, and I'm giving her report, but I can probably answer some of your questions too.
Thank you for being here.
The first part of the report, we, the Audit Committee met last Thursday, the eighteenth. And first part of the report was IT. And Byron has spoken about it. We gave the report to you in the Shade Meeting two weeks ago. So you've already seen what we, what we just saw last week. The internal audit review of the Agittec contract, we reviewed that in our meeting. And the contract was extended and modified in accordance with Florida contract law. Review of the invoices noted over payments in 2016, 2017, based on the spending cap listed in the board document. In December 2018, the district paid an invoice that billed the district at a rate established in the modified contract for two months prior to the modification being approved by the board. The Audit Committee asked CRI to add a recommendation that the boilerplate contract used in the district include the effective date of the contract, the annual monetary cap for contract payments. include the effective date of the contract, the annual monetary cap for contract payments, and a statement that the vendor is responsible for any overbilling. In addition, the committee asked that a recommendation be added to the report regarding documentation of receipt of contract services and reconciliation of invoices to contract terms prior to payment, similar to the recommendation in the most recent operational audit from the Auditor General. While the new PeopleSoft application should prevent overpayment of a contract, this function only works if correct and complete information is entered into the system, requiring sufficient controls to ensure data accuracy. The in-house internal audit function could include the periodic review that contract information is accurate and invoices are billed according to the contract terms. The Audit Committee recommends that CRI report with the committee's changes to the board. In addition, the committee believes it is critically important that the board approve an extension and/or modification of an existing contract only after receiving a detailed explanation of the change with supporting documentation and taking the time to discuss the requested change at their public meeting. The draft report of the assessment of PeopleSoft implementation. CRI reviews the implementation of PeopleSoft documents, serious problems with the system, and again, raises concerns about inadequate staffing and training. The report contains 17 recommendations that the board should demand management implement. The Audit Committee understands that the staff has made a valiant effort to deal with the problems, and management must keep the school district running. However, the workarounds being used are creating the same problems of customization that plague the JDE system, and many of them must ultimately be undone. The longer the district waits to identify the root causes of the problems and have them corrected so that PeopleSoft operates as intended, the longer it will take to fix and the more expensive the fix will be. The district needs expert help and high-level guidance referred to in this report under governance. And the word that I want to use is strategic. You need a committee that uses strategic thinking to figure out where the best place is to start. The school board must take a direct role in oversight and provide the resources to bring in expertise to fix the system. Management must own this project and set expectations that PeopleSoft will be properly used by all. All staff must receive training and then be held accountable to use the system as intended. The Audit Committee makes the following four recommendations to the school board. The committee recommends the report, including all 17 recommendations it contains, be implemented. Action plans specifying timelines for implementing the recommendations should be developed and progress reported to the board on a monthly basis. Two, the committee supports the superintendent in securing resources to hire outside consultants for those areas where qualified staff with PeopleSoft expertise cannot be found. The committee supports the district negotiating with the unions to establish 26 pay periods annually, which will remedy many of the payroll issues experienced since July and will provide staff with stable paychecks. The committee recommends the district hire consultants to help with the year-end closeout. And the next meeting is on, our meeting is on April 25, this Thursday. A lot of these changes are being made on the fly, and the squeakiest wheel is getting the attention. And it isn't strategic at all how some of these decisions are made, it's just who's yelling the loudest today. And it needs a more systematic approach, a high-level approach. Any questions?
Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, Board Member Golden?
Yes.
The four recommendations that you just made?
Yes.
Were they presented to the superintendent and to the staff for an opportunity to respond to them or to analyze them? Has that been done?
Yeah, well, they were all in our report last week.
We were in the meeting when they released the report.
Do you have anything to say in terms of whether or not? You know, we keep throwing words around here, you know, we're doing things on the fly. So, I'd like to know if that's true or not, if that's right. If it's not, we need to say so, and we need to say so publicly, and we need to try to do what is right.
Yes, sir, I can tell you that even though we don't have a team noted as a governance team, we do have a leadership team that meets weekly with the maintenance provider to identify the significant problems and to address the order of operations that we're going to fix them. Unfortunately, each month when we're getting to a new year process, because until you cycle through the whole year, you don't know of some of the problems that were not developed. And then, we do have to change our priority of work based on the need that's in front of you. For instance, once we had passed a raise, our priority had to shift to ensure that the calculation for teachers' raises and employee raises were a priority. So, since the software wasn't built, that had to be what our 11 maintenance providers had to work on. Even though we don't have the appropriate staffing of BAs, none of those employees are PeopleSoft with a PeopleSoft background. They were hired in many cases from our own employee staff or so forth, and they're kind of a liaison of worker from the IT expert to the department. But it's still hard to find people with knowledge of each of the departments or a background in PeopleSoft. So, we're trying to look for some match of knowledge walking in the ground. So, that has been a little challenging for us to fill them. But, you know, I think no one anticipated the number of undeveloped modules or some of the problems. I know, back to what Mr. Kennedy was talking about, the patch at MTC. The reason the patch has not been rolled out is because the system was customized. So, we're not sure what will happen to it if we implement a patch. So, we're trying to wait till we have a time that's not going to be disruptive to that organization. So, it has been challenging, but I do think that many of the recommendations and things stated are good recommendations that we are going to add and work on and take into consideration. But I can assure you, we are making strategic decisions. The problem is we're having to adjust them sometimes based on the discoveries before us and the timeline of the school calendar that requires us to have things finished. But there's no doubt, I appreciate the sense of urgency between the internal auditor and the Audit Committee, and they're concerned because we're all concerned. I had to address the MEA Teacher Representative Group last week, and I can assure you, to stand before 50 teachers for two hours and hear all the complaints of how the system doesn't work is not pleasant for any of us. So, it is our commitment, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Hanson, and the team to get it operational as it was intended as quickly as possible with the best financial oversight as possible as well.
Have we had any board members involved in this process to the extent that they might even be perceived as part of a governance moment?
I do know that when we were dealing last year when Mr. Dr. Hopes was the chair, and we were bringing in the parent company of HTC, which we will talk about that more later this evening, and dealing with some of the defects and problems we were having, Dr. Hopes was in attendance with those meetings. So, we had extensive meetings with that company and our head senior team up through December. And then, that ended.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kennedy, Board Member Kennedy?
Thanks, Mr. Minor. I just, you know, I've said this in the past, but I believe we as a board share some of this blame. There has been, this has settled down, there's been a lot of finger pointing, but it has settled down in the aftermath because now we are like, hey, we got a problem, this is the new team, and we're going to get it solved. But one of the mistakes I think I made and we made as a board, if you remember three years ago, we were told there will be no customizations. We're going to take this out of the box, we're going to plug it in, and it's going to work. And here we are, and we were informed along the way, hey, because our process or because of the statute works this way, we've got to customize. And so, I'm just kind of brainstorming here, but maybe we've got to take a step back, have Accenture come in and say, hey, I hate to tell you guys this, but we've got to start back at square one, and we're going to build this right. The second thing is about the 26 pay periods. And this was in a SHADE session, but that has now passed, so I can talk about this. We sat in a SHADE session and told leadership at the time, we have your back. Go out and get 26 pay periods, we will have your back on this. And when leadership came back and said, well, we just can't do it, that was on us, and we should have pushed back. And so, I think now is the time, again, that we are going through this process, and it has been a long and continuing one, but let's learn from those mistakes. And we can't do anything about the past, we can only move forward from today. And I think that's two key recommendations from Byron and from the Audit Committee that we can act on pretty quickly and soundly as a board. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so we've always had the chairs? Yeah, I'm so sorry about Mr. Chairman. So, it's always been the chairs who have worked closely with respect to, I'll just use the governance process that was needed. You, this started out with you as a chair, Mr. Hopes as a chair. I thought when he was chair.
Can I answer that, Mr. Minor?
Okay, Board Member Kennedy?
No, we've never had a governance team which included
No, I understand that.
any of the board members. And even when I was chair, I did not take any active role in the planning with the superintendent at the time. I got the same board updates that everybody else, all the other board members got at that time. Dr. Hopes came in, he was chair, he also had ERP expertise from previous implementations. So, I think that's why his kind of being in on media, it made sense because he had been there, but he had been at that table before in private industry. So, that was kind of specific to Dr. Hopes.
Okay, Board Member Hopes?
And I think it also addresses, you know, what Reverend Golden mentioned, but those, if you remember back when I was elected chairman, I talked about during the term of my chair, the two things I wanted to accomplish. And one of those was a shared governance structure of board leadership. And the reason for doing that, if you recall, we had the discussion about we each have individual passions and expertise, and in complex organizations, to really effective, to effectively provide the oversight and the governance really across the organization. This is one perfect example of how that type of shared governance between administration and a board comes together. And we showed it during that critical period of time when the ERP went live. We had a number of organizations that were taking part in it, we had some serious problems. And what we did is we actually put together a governance structure to get through the hurdles of the failed go-live. But in this workshop, I would like to raise that issue again because we have challenges across the district in everything from transportation, construction, you know, compliance, reporting. And I do believe that this is a time, we had many things going on while I was chair, and that was one of the things that I wanted to accomplish that we just weren't able to accomplish because of all the challenges we had. But shared governance, this type of reorganization where we as individual board members work with the administration to help understand the support that they need and help leadership make decisions in a shared way is a very common organizational structure to bring governance, a board, and the administration together to more efficiently and effectively solve problems. And so, I hope that, you know, while it may be a year late, I mean, I hope we can have that discussion, and I hope we can identify areas where each of us would like to contribute both our expertise and our passion to help the organization improve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopes. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, real quick, I think now's the time. To that point, a couple of Audit Committee meetings ago, I expressed an interest to Mrs. Vetter about the IT working group. That group invited me, I haven't sat in on any of their meetings, but really, it was not to participate, it was to listen and ask questions from the board perspective. That invite has now been extended to me, and I realize in our bylaws, there's a little bit of, and there is that line between board and operations to be mindful of, because I'm not in there as a board member to boss people around, at least in my view, I don't, I hope I won't. But Barbara is so proud of this IT working group and the transparency that they have shown, the, just kind of the fervor with which they are doing their work. And she was so proud of them, and I sensed that, and I said, I'd really like to see this team get together. I didn't want to show up at that meeting until I, number one, addressed it with you as my board colleagues, and number two, with Jim Die, to get a, maybe it's not a, maybe it's not a legal issue, but I just wanted to run it by you guys, by my board colleagues. Because if you are comfortable with it, I would like to go see this team in action. Again, not to participate, but just to listen and ask questions, and then I could report back to the board. Barbara's already done a good job of it, and we've gotten many positive updates about that IT team. I just wanted to go see it for myself after hearing about it at the
And it's tomorrow morning at 9:00, so.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you.
Okay, we're running about a half an hour behind. We've got a couple other reports that we still have to do this afternoon. And the Community Partnership Schools for Manatee Elementary?
Mr. Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders and Deputy Superintendent Wagner and all others, Dr. Connor here.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce this concept of the Community Partnership School. By way of history, in our difficult times of September 12, or September of 2012, we had in this community 18 schools, or either D or F schools. Subsequent to that time, under the very able direction of now Superintendent Saunders, we have no F schools, and we have, I think, three or four CD-level schools. Along the way, I attended a presentation late last year concerning the concept of a Community Partnership School, and took that concept to Superintendent Saunders to say, is this not something that we should explore in our community? And she was very amenable to that. So, she and I have been co-hosting an effort in that direction. And it's a direction that basically started back in 2010 in the state when the University of Central Florida, the Children's Home Society of Florida, and Orange County created such a school. There are a lot of different models for this, but they've created what has now turned out to be a very, very interesting and a highly successful business model. And it's based on the creation of four core partners within a community. One of those being a university or college. We have approached and gotten a nice reception from the University of South Florida, Sarasota Manatee Group, for them to be that core partner. One is the nonprofit, and actually, it's the Children's Home Society of Florida that acts as the basic nonprofit, and then we bring community non-for-profits on a broader scale with that. The other is the school district, and with Superintendent Saunders, we've been working constructively to identify a school and what the program is. And the fourth is a healthcare provider, and under the direction of Mr. Patrick Carnegie, we've met and gotten a nice reception that they would be working with us as our healthcare provider. So, what we're going to do today is to have Ms. Tara Hormel, who is the Senior Vice President of Operations, give you more information about what this program is and its process.
Thank you.
Let's see.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Tara Hormel. I'm the Senior Vice President of Operations for Children's Home Society of Florida. And with me is Jarvis Wheeler. He is the Regional Director for Community Partnership Schools. And we're going to give you a high-level overview of the model, as well as some of our early successes that we've had. So we'll go ahead and get started. As Dr. Conner was alluding to, Community Partnership School is not only a physical place, but is a set of partnerships between a school and other community resources. I know that this illustration isn't going to be too much of a departure from what you are familiar with, but, you know, there are many children in the communities across Florida that come to school each day with multiple challenges, and they're expected to learn on par with their peers in communities that don't have those challenges. This gives you a little idea as to where all of our Community Partnership Schools are today. There are 17, oh, actually 15 on the list. There are two that aren't represented. And CHS is a core, excuse me, a core partner in 13 of those schools. As was already mentioned, we have four core partners, but there is also, we've done a lot of work in the last eight years since we first started at Evans High in Orlando, around creating a model so that when we were going to replicate, this would be something that was, we wanted it not only to be proven, but we wanted some standards that each of the core partners have to live up to in order to be considered a Community Partnership School. And that's where UCF comes in, and we'll talk about that more later on with the certification Talked about the university, the nonprofit, the healthcare provider, as well as the school district, but there can be other core partners as well. To be a core partner means signing a long-term partnership, that we are there for the long haul. It's not that we're just going to leave as soon as the funding disappears. It is our goal, and that's part of what we work on as a leadership cabinet, is the funding for the Community Partnership School. And it's really our goal, then, to reduce the barriers for the children at the school, barriers to learning, and to really lift the school and to see marked success in their academic performance. The four core pillars are collaborative leadership, to bring a minimum of four entities together. That's not easy. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of communication. And, but our focus really is on collaboration and leveraging one another's resources so that we're not duplicating efforts, and we can really expand what happens in and around the school, in the community, and all for the benefit of the children and their families. So, whoops, skipped ahead of myself. So expanded learning is the next pillar. It really is focusing on tutoring, both academic, focusing on academic performance that not only is expanded day, before school, after school, weekends, it's also creating opportunities that push into the classroom as well. And of course, all of this is done in coordination and collaboration with the school leadership. Because our students have multiple, sometimes multiple untreated medical challenges, medical challenges, the help that a school nurse can't do, you know, can't address on her own, having a full-service healthcare partner who is providing services on campus reduces time away from learning, because they don't have to then miss school in order to go to the doctor. They can get their needs met right there. And it's not just medical, it's also dentistry, can be vision, as well as behavioral health. And then the last pillar is family and community engagement. So we really want to make sure that our families are equipped with what they need in order to support their child's academic success, as well as lifting the entire community. And you'll see in some information later that we have made a difference in terms of crime in and around the school. This very busy illustration gives you just a little snapshot as to all the places where the core partners connect together. It's at the leadership cabinet at a strategic level, it's the operations team that outlines what happens within the walls of the school. We talk about communication, we talk about data, grants and funding. We involve the community through a community leadership council and a student leadership council as well. And we also involve parents. And each one of the core partners has people who they commit to each one of these activities. Talked about before, the UCF certification, this really is a standardized set of guidelines in which there are multiple standards and 31 fundamental practices that, in order to be certified, a Community Partnership School must meet those standards. And now Jarvis is going to come talk a little bit about Mort Elementary. Mort Elementary is located in Tampa.
Thank you, Tara, and good afternoon, board. Thanks for having us here today.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
So there's a saying that we say, Community Partnership Schools, if you've seen one, you've really only seen one. And that's essentially because it's dedicated to the needs of the community, the stakeholders. And right now, I'll be speaking to you all about Mort Elementary, which is probably the closest neighbor that you all have in Tampa, Hillsborough County. So just some background information about Mort Elementary. Historically, they were a DRF performing school. They were en route to be taken over by the state this past school year, and we were so gracious enough that we received our C. And we were only two points away from a B, so very happy about it. But when you talk about the demographics, about 60% Hispanic, so we have a real strong keen focus on that. But I want to get into some of the things that we do at Mort Elementary School. Tara, share with you all about those four pillars of service delivery, collaborative leadership is the crux of what we do. I heard someone speaking earlier about just shared governance, and that's really where it starts, but it's shared operations as well. So you can see the four core partners at Mort identified. You can see the school district, the college and university, USF, nonprofit, and the healthcare provider. But you can also see the two additional partners that really specialize in community development, which is Innovation Place in the University area, CDC. So the requirement is to have those four core, but you're not limited to those four core. So getting into that next pillar, which is expanded learning, all about expanding what takes place, not just before school and after school, but also during that school day. At Mort, what does that look like? Well, we have yoga, Girl Scouts, dance clubs. We also have our Teacher Leader Academy. And this academy has won three national awards for being able to allow teachers to continue their education and receive their master's degree free of charge, which you'll see at Mort, how it has affected our retention for teachers, but how that also in turn affects other things as well. On top of that, what else can you utilize to expand the day? You can have mentors, internships, really just embedding all of those services and supports within the day. And then that's that third pillar, wellness supports. So at Mort, we have two full-time mental health counselors. When you talk about being able to access that mental health counselor on campus, and the face that that mental health counselor has with being able to get rid of some of those negative stigmas that may be associated with those services are paramount. Along with our vision and dental services, which we've historically been piecemealing, but going into next school year, we'll have our health facility built on the campus of Mort Elementary School. And that'll be able to service not only our students, but the parents, the families in the community as well. And then family and community engagement, this is something that is really exploding at Mort. You can see within our parent resource center, we have different things, like our food pantry, where we serve over 200 families a week. We have parenting classes that take place every single day. And then we have our parents become VIPs that are honored in ceremonies. But really being able to take on leadership as well, coming alongside their students and children, to be partners in their education, but also better in their lives as well. So you can kind of see just at a glance as it relates to service output, whether it's vision, mental health counseling, hours and tutoring and enrichment, just kind of an overview of what's happened at Mort last school year. So when you talk about a Community Partnership School and really that startup funding, you're looking at that price tag, which I would say is closer to the 145 than the 125. But what comes with that is obviously your director, which is really the linchpin of the entire partnership, but the technical assistance from the University of Central Florida that helps with that certification, but also a lot of the convenance supports that Tara mentioned earlier that CHS can provide in data, business development, communications. And then the funding sources, everything is shared. So when everything is shared, everything is braided. So whether it's public, we have the state legislative appropriation that's huge. Hopefully, we have some great news in a few weeks. Municipal support, private support, whether it's foundations, corporations and grants, but also partnerships. Who within your core partnership can maybe help support what's happening in Community Partnership Schools? Can they take on a role? Can there be volunteers? What other in-kind ways that can happen as well? So talking about impact, it's all about closing the achievement gap. That's pretty much the challenge. Our students, as Tara illustrated early in the presentation, they come facing so many barriers. And oftentimes, the ceilings are always raising for our students, more expected for them. But who is really focused on that ground floor, making sure that those basic needs are met while the ceiling is still rising? And that's really what the Community Partnership School infrastructure is all about, bringing in a framework that focuses on collective impact, to really provide those basic needs for our students and their families, to raise our students and close the achievement gap from the ground floor. While simultaneously, this allows our academic professionals to continue to focus on raising that ceiling, while this infrastructure really builds from the ground floor. So some of the results that we've seen at one of our certified Community Partnership Schools in Pensacola, C.A. Weiss Elementary, you can see decreased negative behaviors, and you can also see decreased out-of-school suspensions. Now, that's not just reflective of C.A. Weiss. I was just sharing with Tara earlier that this is a trend that we're seeing throughout our Community Partnership Schools, whether it was ACE, that I heard a few of you all recently visited our flagship Evans High School, one of our sister elementary schools in Cocoa. We are really seeing those negative behaviors decrease throughout our Community Partnership Schools. And a lot of that is through those wellness supports, when you talk about the mental health counseling, but when you also talk about the supports in place for our teachers and academic staff. And then that leads to teacher retention. So you can see at Weiss, from 40% to 98%. And I had the chance to be able to speak with our community school director and some of the staff up there, and they really talked about all of the supports. This is something that we see at Mort Elementary as well. We know a big pool that they have is that Teacher Leadership Academy, but really feeling empowered. A lot of our teachers, being a former teacher, may go to school and maybe major in math, science, English, but maybe they didn't major in social work like myself. But having those supports and having someone really there to serve the students and take care of those needs that oftentimes can be overlooked has led to that improved teacher retention. And then when we talk about our economic impact at Evans High School, so now, since we're growing so much, we don't have to focus just on Evans, but at Evans, back when I was there, the graduation rate was about 49%. Right before we got started, the graduation rate in 2010 was about 64%. Now, our graduation rate at Evans High School is 88%. So it's something that we definitely like to hang our hat on, but you can see, as it relates to the increased graduation rates, what that looks like for now, our students to have a higher income potential. So you can see that can equate to over 1.6 million. And then also society costs that are avoided. The more likely you are to graduate from high school, the less likely you are to be involved in negative activities. And that alludes to a 43.8 million society cost avoided. And I will call Tara back up to close this out.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So kind of as Dr. Conner alluded to earlier, you know, we're in the process of identifying the four core partners. It sounds like that there have been phenomenal organizations that have stepped up to kind of hear more and want to take those next steps with us. From there, we form the leadership cabinet. Once we've formed the core partners, then we start working on getting a lay of the land, doing a needs and resources assessment, as well as working on securing funding. So with that, I don't know, did you want to say anything additional or open up for questions?
If there were any questions of the members of the board or such that we could answer at this point, as we've related, this is a process that we have started into, and we have an ambitious schedule. Yes, Reverend Golden?
Okay. Board member Golden? Yes. The concept of the community school, do you all embrace any of the academic challenges that are faced from school to school? I think the brother said, each community, if you've seen one community school, you've only seen one. And so how do you identify within a particular school that need for that school?
Yeah, absolutely. So really, that's where we work closely with the principal. What are the top priorities for that school? And of course, they're getting direction from the leadership of the school district. But what are the top challenges? Sometimes it's focusing on third grade reading, and we zero in on that. Sometimes it's more broadly across multiple grade levels. It's all about increasing the academic performance, decreasing behaviors, as well as grade promotion. So your goals are our goals, ultimately.
There will be a needs assessment that's going to go forward very shortly concerning an area concerning the school.
Have you all asked anybody to do this and they said no?
Has anybody, have we asked anybody? No. Really, the hardest part is more funding. Everybody loves it, but who's going to pay for it?
The answer to your question is no, we haven't. Everybody that I have approached, not only we're very in favor of it, but they're looking forward to be able to participate.
Here in
In Manatee County.
Okay. And this 145,000 bucks is like the startup for a school?
Yes.
So 10 schools is 1.4. Somebody Help me out, Dr. Hopes. So
There'll be one school, Reverend Golden, that's going to be chosen as our demonstration program to put all of this in place.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it is good to start with one. I think it was very fortunate that we were able to start at Evans with one school, because as the core partners come together, it's a process to get, to build the trust among each of the leadership and the operations team to make decisions before you start expanding. Expanding too quickly, and sometimes you can
I noticed your core partner is a formal commitment of 25 years.
That is, actually, the MOU doesn't really say a timeframe, and it's, we've joked about the fact that it's 25 years from any point in time that you ask us. It's really more geared towards a long-term partnership. This isn't a three-year grant that's done.
Mm-hmm.
And then everybody leaves.
Board member Kennedy?
Reverend Golden, I just want to address your point about the education piece. The beauty of this model is that each of the core partners does their job on the school campus, and it's that partnership director, Travis, right, Travis? Jarvis, I'm sorry, which Jarvis referred to as a linchpin. That person is the linchpin who allows each partner to do their job without getting, so the elementaries, or the principal of the school doesn't have to get pulled into the healthcare details, or what CHS or what Boys and Girls Club is doing. Everybody can focus on their role on campus, and that linchpin person can kind of guide the team. They can do things like community outreach to parents in the community. It's, yeah, I mean, Dr. Conner is right. Anybody who has been approached about this so far has been, how do I get involved? What do I need to do? But as you guys just pointed to, it's that commitment, it's the financial commitment, because in education, things just come and go. It's like, oh, three years, the grant's up, let's try something else. So, and that's, again, what works about this, is that we're coming into, we, or the partners are coming into a neighborhood to say, you know, let me digress for one second. We've had a lot of conversations over the last three years about third grade reading levels. And so, and there's been a lot of good stuff done to read to kids and to get kids books and books and to get access, access to books. But that, to me, is treating a symptom of a disease. The disease is poverty. The symptom is that these kids can't read on grade level by third grade. So the community partnership school model treats the disease of poverty. And to me, as we move forward, that's going to be our foundation dollars, um, our, our volunteers. If we can focus that effort on poverty alleviation, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's going to follow besides third grade reading. Um, and so that's why I'm really excited about this, uh, this project. And I appreciate, um, let me finish with one thing. I appreciate the superintendent's leadership on this. She is the, she is the person that gave the approval that got this team going. And I would, who, Conrad, I see you here, Julie is here, anybody else? Uh, Dr. Colgate is here. If you could please stand up, we've had a working group in the district here. Mr. Rio has been on that team. Um, if you all, this, we've had three meetings, I think, so far about this, and so it's been, uh, it's a very dynamic group that has come together and, um, and because this is the superintendent's style, uh, decisions are made and we're moving quickly. And, uh, we're moving in the right direction quickly as well. So, thanks.
Superintendent, uh, would you like to share a few comments about where we are with this?
Uh, I can tell you, we're so fortunate to be in a community that's so willing to make a difference, and, and this really is a community effort. Uh, and, and I can say, Dr. Conard, Charlie says I'm quick, he's really quick. So, uh, as they give the aggressive timeline, he, he assures me we can get this afloat, uh, within a year, no problem. Uh, and I think he's right. So we have a lot of willing, uh, partners, and, uh, we're, we're still in the planning phase, but, um, we're fortunate and we have the right facility, and, uh, the construction team's already been out there, and, uh, I think it's going to be wonderful. Uh, our goal is to possibly have three within five years. Uh, I would, I would like that. Uh, Charlie and I and a, a couple of community folks, uh, Conrad was one, went to visit Mr. Rosen in Orlando to see the two elementary schools that we partnered with, and changed the entire community of one. It is just absolutely remarkable. So, uh, I'm very hopeful that we're going to see the same results here.
So you brought Mr. Rosen back with you?
We, we tried to, uh.
I, I don't think Barbara.
We were just so inspired by, uh, our meeting with him. It, it was just so inspirational. It really made us all want to come back and just make a difference like he has.
I, I know Orange, uh, school board members like to brag about this, my involvement in the Florida School Board Association and Superintendent Barbara Chergens said, Barbara Perkins says, you know, this, this is really a blessing.
Yeah, it really is.
Uh, what, uh, do, do we have some place kind of, uh, focus for, uh, starting with this?
We, we, we are looking, we are looking at Manatee Elementary, and, uh, we're, we're still in the, in the problem-solving phase, but that's where we're looking at rolling this initial model out.
All right. Board Member Kennedy.
Well, no, we're doing okay time-wise. I just, um, I, I wanted to speak to the, to, um, Harris Rosen, Harris Rosen's involvement. He's, uh, Gina, you're from Orlando, so you know where Tangelo Park is.
I'm from here, but I.
Oh, sorry, you went to school in Orlando. You have an Orlando connection, right? Sorry about that.
I taught in Pine Hills.
So you know where Tangelo Park is, you know where Paramore is.
Yeah, I volunteered at Paramore.
So, um, Harris, twenty years ago, Harris Rosen, who, um, has been a, um, a hotel guy in, in central Florida for a long time, um, he adopted the Tangelo Park neighborhood, and he made a commitment to that neighborhood and those families to say, if, if you, if your child starts with me or starts with my program at two and three years old, and they follow this academic track through Orlando County Public Schools, uh, Harris Rosen made the commitment that he would pay for college or technical school, or whatever that, um, whatever that child or that family decided that student wanted to do once they graduated. And the way that he described it to us on Wednesday is that what he did was inject hope into that neighborhood, because these kids and these families now had a path, pathway out. They didn't have, well, I'm going to be dead by the time I'm twenty-one, or I'm going to be in jail by the time I'm eighteen. They saw, um, that there, there is a path for them. Now, that has been expensive for Harris Rosen. He's spent about fourteen million dollars, but he has put hundreds and hundreds of kids into post-secondary education. And the, um, I think, Conrad, was the number he used eight? Every one dollar spent, it's eight to eight, I think? Uh, eight to one. And so that's not only the economic benefit that you guys touched on in the presentation, but it's also, uh, he, he shared the, um, the anecdote about the, the City of Orlando Police Department, really now, after twenty years of this program, really sees Tangelo Park as kind of this oasis, which is surrounded by other neighborhoods that are still having, having crime and issues of poverty, to come back to it. So, um, you know, it's, it's just like this, this thing has really been exciting, but just everybody's come in, has been interested in. We really had a, we had an amazing meeting with Mr. Rosen to, to really kind of make us think, well, uh, maybe we need to find a pre-K or daycare partner, because at the A school, which Jarvis alluded to, and which is in Paramore, it's only, it's not even two years old yet, but Harris Rosen is the, is the daycare partner and the pre-K partner. So that, that section of the, of the campus, it's a city block in Paramore, and that piece of the campus, which is integrated into all the partners, he pays for the staff, he paid for the, the capital, the, the build-out. So, um, it's true, every, every one of them's different. And that's, that's kind of what's, what's unique to the A school, the OCPS A school. But it's just, I, this thing can go in so many great directions, and, um, and I hope we as a board will put our, put our, uh, decision-making.
Board Member Hopes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What, uh, around the state, the ones that you've been involved with, and by the way, I was a associate teacher at Moore Elementary School many decades ago.
Oh, okay.
Uh, many decades ago. Uh, I'd, I'd like to see how fantastic it is today. Uh, what percentage of them include the federally qualified health center as the healthcare partner?
Is it everybody? Is everybody FQHC?
Most, most of the markets you mentioned, you know, they're pretty, pretty heavily involved, because that's, that's, that's one aspect of the cost.
Yes.
Uh, that, because what, where I'd like us to follow up next, and I've had the conversation with Dr. Conard, is, is we have to have a, a sustainable financial support system. Um, and with, with, you know, MRC, that's, that's a big component of it, but there are many other components where we, we, we just need the sustainability of the financial partners. I, I think we're going to be approving, which is, in essence, a little bit of seed money to, to hire part of an FTE to help in the development of other directors, sort of like a, a fraction of a inter, initial through UCF.
The one tonight, uh, we are, uh, there, there is an item on the board agenda for a contract.
Right.
With, uh, Amy Ellis at UCF, who will help facilitate our process, especially since we're looking at the certification and being new to us. It's very helpful to have someone that's gone through the process of making sure that we're, we're doing all the right things. But actually, that startup money for the director that runs it is an item that the district cannot pay for.
Right.
So there are many things that we can utilize, uh, our funding, but that is one that we can't, which is why we have to raise some money for that person that kind of is the liaison tying it all together.
Okay. Dr. Conard?
Uh, my vision of that, Dr. Hopes, is that this is where the community is going to be stepping up as our, uh, as our partner in all of this, to help financially support these four core and the program as it goes forward. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for all your effort.
Thank, thank you both very much.
I, uh.
Oh, you got.
I have a topic I'd like to leave you with.
Okay, thank you.
Of the activity that we've done today.
Fabulous. Thank you both, uh, very much. And, uh, we, we got some, let's see, our, our next thing is, oops. Okay. Uh, planning update, and, uh, Mr. Pen, Pendley.
Thank you, guys.
Are you okay, Jim?
Yep.
Now, you know time I said that, right? I'm just checking. No, just said time I said that.
You said that thing, I have it worked out. He needs to change his language and her conduct.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr., good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. It's not even evening yet, is it?
Well, afternoon, evening, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. Board members, good to see you. Superintendent, uh, I'm going to give you a very abbreviated update on two items that are coming forward. They're a little unusual from what you typically see, so, um, we just wanted to provide you at least a heads up on these items before, before they get here. Uh, both of these items are scheduled for May the fourteenth, and one has to do with the Community High School, Parish Community High School, and it's a reimbursement agreement. And the, and the other is Moxon Waller Road Construction Improvements Agreement. What's that?
He's a troublemaker.
Oh, I, I didn't even hear what he said.
It's just sassy.
She won't repeat it. She won't repeat it.
Okay.
Remove my, my vernacular. I'm not saying north of the river, I told you.
No, north of the river, okay.
North of the river.
No, north of the river, okay. Um, let me give you an overview of the Parish Community High School Utility Reimbursement Agreement, which is north.
North County.
County. Yes, there you go, see?
I get. I don't know, but I'm going to make this change countywide. I don't, see how I'm working it through? See how I'm doing it?
When, when, uh, district staff permitted the high school, um, our engineers determined and the county approved certain utilities, and those were twelve-inch water lines under Erie Road and under Martha Road, and a six-inch sewer, excuse me, a four-inch sewer line along Martha Road. The county, as they typically do, and a lot of counties and cities do this, they ask us to oversize the lines, uh, and to be, and we would be reimbursed for that. We did that, uh, and this has the effect of saving them from later on going in and oversight or putting new lines in. So it's a, a cost-saving to the taxpayers in general. They requested that the twelve-inch water lines be oversized to twenty-four inches, and that the four-inch sewer line be oversized to six inches. We have completed all that construction, and our engineers and, uh, the contractor, subcontractor have determined what that cost is, and it was an additional four hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and seven cents. So we have scheduled a reimbursement agreement on the May fourteenth, uh, school board agenda, and then on May twenty-first, it is to be presented to Manatee County, County Commission. At the same time, they will amend their capital improvement plan or capital improvement budget to incorporate that money, and you'll receive the reimbursement shortly thereafter. It's a good thing, we're just being paid back, but it's an unusual thing. We haven't typically done this, so I just wanted the board to be aware. The next item is the Moxon Waller Road Construction Improvements Agreement. There are, uh, actually two different things going on on Moxon Waller Road and construction up there, but to, uh, today, I'm just going to talk about this one. And, um, when we permitted.
Question before we move.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair. So, uh, it's basically close to half a million dollars, and it was the, 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 the upsize charge.
Correct.
Um, did, because, uh, did we use bonded money to do that as part of the construction budget?
I cannot answer that right now.
If, if we can find out, because I want to make sure that in addition to the direct cost, if there's any cost of that money, that we get reimbursed for our cost of that money during that period of time.
I will determine that prior to the, the May fourteenth board meeting. I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Hopes, Board Member Hopes.
Okay. So, um, there's an agreement for construction improvements on Moxon Waller Road. Uh, this agreement is going to come again on May fourteenth. It's something that we haven't done in the past for the most part, but, uh, this time it makes a lot of sense, and I want to kind of walk you through the project. So when we permitted Harvey Elementary School, um, the county required that we install a traffic signal, which is a mast-arm traffic signal, as well as turn lane improvements on the south side of Moxon Waller Road and in Moxon Waller Road itself. The, a mast-arm is about, it's probably about a five hundred thousand dollar ticket, okay? And the lead time on getting a mast-arm right now is most likely four to five months, just to be able to get one. So what we found out is that there's an adjacent development called Moxon Waller Associates. It's owned by Pat and John Neal, and they are, well, they have permitted what's called Amazon, which is just to the north, and they're permitting Morgan's Glen, which is just to the, uh, to the east of the elementary school. And they're also required to make roadway improvements. So they were required to make the turn lane improvements on Moxon Waller Road in addition to what we're doing, and they're also required to make improvements in the same intersection that we are required to put a traffic signal in. So imagine what that's going to look like with two contractors, two engineers, two owners out there working. So met with, uh, Mr. Neal, and, uh, both of us agreed that it's better for one party to do this, so that we reduce conflicts, we can expedite the project, uh, we can have a unified engineered project, and, uh, it would be faster and most likely it would result in cost savings, uh, because it would be one contractor bidding the job instead of, instead of two subcontractors. We're pretty good at building schools, but we're not real good at building roads. We don't like building roads. But Mr. Neal has a lot of experience in that over the past couple of years. So, uh, he has agreed to perform all the roadway construction, and we have retained the same engineer, that is Stan Tech. That is not the project engineer. The project engineer is fully cleared, but for this specific purpose, we retain Stan Tech. Mr. Neal retains Stan Tech. There is a unified design. It has been submitted to the county. The county has approved that design. They are still working on the traffic signal portion of it. Mr. Neal has agreed to complete the construction of all the required improvements, both his and ours, by July the thirty-first. And, um, in talking with his engineer today, they are having issues in getting the mast-arm signal, so it's very likely that they might start with a temporary signal at the intersection of one hundred and fifteenth, which is Copperstone and Moxon Waller Road. So there'd be a temporary signal until they can procure the mast-arm. Again, it's very difficult to, to procure those right now. We would reimburse Neal for the actual cost, which our, uh, our engineer as well as contractor can determine, plus pay a ten percent construction management fee to him, which is within the norm for a job this small. And additionally, he's really taken all the risk on his side. So that is a quick update. Two agreements that you're going to see in May fourteenth board meeting that are different than what you typically see. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Board Member Kennedy.
Mike, I just, I was thinking of one intersection, then you took me back to the Copperstone.
Okay.
Which is one fifteenth, right?
That is one fifteenth, yes.
So that intersection at Moxon Waller and one fifteenth, that is one hundred percent our responsibility? And down the road, is Pat's?
The traffic signal at that intersection is one hundred percent our responsibility.
Gotcha, okay.
That is the way the county determined to be. I disagree with that.
That horse is out of the barn.
That horse is gone, yes.
Um, and then, um.
Excuse me. We also have to make improvements on one fifteenth itself.
Leading into the campus.
Yes. But that's, that's not for Neal. That's, we're doing those. That's outside this agreement.
So, so on, on Neal community side, they have to widen the road, and as long as they're doing that, they're going to put the light in for us? Is that basically what's happening?
And they're realigning some of the intersection, they're softening it, um, there's additional right-of-way that has to be dedicated. We've already done our portion of the right-of-way dedication, but again, if we're out there putting a traffic signal in and trying to put a turn lane in, and they're trying to extend the turn lane and revising the curvature of the intersection, it, it just is not going to work well.
No, I mean, it's just common sense to me. I just wanted to kind of wrap my head around exactly what was happening there. Um, as long as you're here, and on a, and a related note, I wanted to jump to the other side of campus, and, and, Mr. Chair, we had an item that got pulled, which was the road on the east side of Barbara Harvey, and I was, I was just curious, Mr.[1766.82]
and trying to put a turn lane in, and they're trying to extend the turn lane and revising the curvature of the intersection, it just is not going to work well.
No, I mean, it's just common sense to me. I just wanted to kind of wrap my head around exactly what was happening there. As long as you're here, and on a related note, I wanted to jump to the other side of campus. And, Mr. Chair, we had an item that got pulled, which was the road on the east side of Barbara Harvey. And I was just curious, Mr. Chair, if you could talk about kind of why that was pulled and with Mr. Pendley here, we can kind of lean on his expertise. I know the hope was to get that done by the opening of school. I saw it on there. I was like, oh, good, we're progressing, and then it was gone. And I can only ask you when we're sitting here, so.
Okay. I'll respond to that. The... In one of the pictures that you just showed, you said that the east side of the property road would be completed by July 31, 2019. Did I see that correctly that just passed by you?
That's not the east side driveway. The July 31 completion is for the improvements within the right-of-way of Moxon Waller Road. That is separate from what Mr. Kennedy is talking about up there.
He's asking about something different.
Okay, yeah. You say it's just for the right-of-way?
Everything within the right-of-way. It's turn lanes, diesel lanes, striping, modification of the intersection, traffic signal. That's...
On Moxon Waller Road?
On Moxon Waller Road.
Okay, that's all they're, at this point, talking about in terms of having completed by July 31.
That is this agenda item today. Again, what Mr. Kennedy's talking about is another item which I can talk about if the board wants to.
Which we're not... That's fluid. Let me...
That's what I wanted to get at. What's going on with that side of the campus?
Well, it's just fluid. There's some discussions going on between the Neal family and the district to, you know, have an alternate entrance and exit besides going into Copperstone, which we need. And that there would be a roadway along the east boundary. And the Neal family would like to have at least use, you know, of that roadway where our property is to benefit their property just east of there where they're having a development. And I think that it's going to work out in a positive way, but because it was fluid at this point, I pulled it, you know, from the agenda. We... One possibility, if they want to use it, that they would basically pay for all that. There's questions with that roadway. You know, the county has a right-of-way at the top end, you know, along Moxon Waller Road. We have to get that from the county. And what goes into making a safe roadway going to the, you know, south end where it would enter into, you know, parking area, you know, for our school, you know, that got to be worked out and how it also goes into the property owned by Neal's right now has to be worked out. Now, there's an issue of they would like to, you know, have this property, you know, needed to them.
Which was originally on the agenda, correct?
Right. And I pulled it, okay. And I'm not sure that they really need that property or if it's in the best interest of the school district to give them that property, but that's being discussed, you know, right now in terms of everybody wants the other to, you know, benefit. We want Neal's to benefit. They want us to benefit. And coming up with a fair, you know, plan, you know, for dealing with it is what's going on right now. And I have pretty good confidence that it's gonna work out beneficial for the district. But until, you know, it's more firm than it is, you know, or expected to be for the day, I pulled it. I didn't want, you know, the board to approve it or tell them to go jump in the lake until we had something really, you know, firm, you know, to come before the board, and so I pulled it.
Okay. Can I ask one follow-up question?
Yeah, sure.
It was on the agenda.
Yes.
That, to me, signifies that it's firm.
No. That means... No, that means it's, you know, possible, but it wasn't possible for the day to act on.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, sir. Board Member Golden.
Mr. Pendley, could you tell me, School Board would reimburse actual costs for school districts' required improvements plus 10% for a construction management fee? Do we have a firm dollar amount on that right now?
We don't have a firm dollar amount, sir, but we have put a cap in there of $650,000. Again, I think the masked arm, according to the engineers I've spoken with, is about $500,000 by itself. So, we capped it at 650.
Okay. And they have agreed to that cap? So, they won't be arguing with us about it?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Board Vice Chair Gina Messenger.
Kind of back to what Reverend Golden just said. Do we have some sort of cost comparison? How much this would cost? I mean, I hear there's a cap, but how much would it cost if we did it ourselves? Do we know that number?
If we do the traffic signal and the road improvements?
If we did all of this work that now we're saying, hey, you can do it. I don't want an estimate. I want to know, do you have a firm number of like how much that would have cost us?
We do not, because it's still being designed. At least the traffic signal is.
I have a hard time agreeing to this, plus a 10% other fee, without knowing, well, what would it have cost us to do it ourselves? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. I don't know how to get you that.
Well, how did you come up with the $650,000?
May I interject? It's not on the agenda for approval by the board.
Oh, I know that. I understand.
Just like the other one was.
I understand.
Some details are being worked out.
Right. I get that. I'm just asking, if it's several weeks away, is it possible that we have that information by then?
I will do my best, but again, it's not fully designed. So, that is something that, you know, our joint engineer, Stan Tech, is doing, and we could determine what our cost is versus, you know, the cost if we do it ourselves versus them. And again, our construction manager would also have a fee.
How did they come up with the $650,000? As a... Who decided that?
The $500,000 for the traffic signal, about $75,000 in turn lane improvements was our guesstimate, and then a 10% construction management fee.
Okay. That still doesn't tell me who got those... Who put those numbers together? Who said that?
Construction services staff.
Okay. So, our construction services have set the caps?
Yes.
Okay.
That did not come from Neal. It was much different than that originally. It was a much higher fee.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a couple more questions.
Okay. Board Member, Vice Chair Messenger. Okay.
Whatever. Tell me whatever. That works. Going back to what Mr. Kennedy talked about with this alternate entrance, and I don't know if that's gonna be in a future workshop before we comes before us or not, so I'd like to ask questions if I can. If there were such an alternate entrance, would we be able to use that for cars?
Yes.
Okay. Then if we were to be able to use that for cars, then would that change how we have proposed a school to the county perhaps wanting to put the light at that intersection instead of right in front of Copperstone?
No. And the reason for that is there's requirements for signal spacing, and there is a light that is going at Fort Hamer, the Fort Hamer Extension in Moxon Waller, and then 115th. That is the next space that you can get.
Okay.
So, they would not allow an interim light in there. Even if we removed the one at 115th, they won't allow it. It's too close.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been part of the issue the whole time.
Got it.
Board Member Hope.
I didn't have these concerns before, but I do now. So, the county's telling us what we need to do with regards to the signal. We've got a road that's been planned to widen it, yet we're gonna put a fixed-arm signal on a road that's gonna be widened. So, we're gonna put a four-lane fixed-arm there so when it's widened, we don't have to replace it?
Yes, sir.
So...
That is the requirement.
So, where is the county's responsibility for traffic lights? And the spacing business, I mean, we've been talking about an alternate entrance to this school for quite some time. And, I mean, I've certainly seen communities and counties where lights are spaced a hell of a lot closer than what we're talking about between Fort Hamer and the entrance to the school. And oh, by the way, it's not just gonna be the entrance to the school. It's gonna be an entrance to a Publix on top of it.
Correct.
I mean, I think it's time for us to have a conversation with our colleagues on the County Commission. And, you know, I mean, and now we're putting up a signal for... That's priced for a road that's wider than what we have because in the future, we're gonna widen it. And what would, you know, what would a suspended traffic signal cost us there? Because a fixed-arm, that's absolutely the most expensive way to put in a traffic signal.
There is no doubt about it. We estimated that a span wire would be about $250,000 to $300,000. Initially, the county was going to allow that. When I say county, I mean, I'm not talking County Commission. I'm talking negotiations with county staff.
Right, right.
Then they backed off of that and said, no, it's required to be a masked arm.
And it's the staff telling us this?
Yes.
I mean, I've got some serious problems with...
Me too.
Well, and I think, you know, I would... I think we need to have a conversation with our colleagues because this is... Look, we're in the education business. They're supposed to be taking care of the roads, and I don't want staff at the county dictating to us what kind of light we need to put in to benefit them in the future or not to have to tear something out and replace it. I mean, because the next thing you're gonna know, when they widen it and then, you know, find out, oh, well, we didn't have the easements for that, and so now, you know, you're gonna throw that metal to the scrapyard and start all over again. It makes absolutely no sense. And I hope the chairman's right that we're gonna get this entrance situation taken care of. I mean, I had an objection because originally the deed that they wanted, the easement that they wanted to give us was restricted, and that was not part of any of the conversations that we've had with Copperstone over the past year and a half. But we need to get this worked out because that entrance needs to be at that school when it opens. And as far as I'm concerned, they don't need a traffic signal because we need a 15-mile-an-hour school zone that runs for probably a mile to ensure that cars can safely turn in there so that children are not getting, you know, injured in a traffic accident. But I will tell you, I'm not comfortable with county staff or what dictating this to us. We're all in this together. And our colleagues at the County Commission and we may need to have a discussion about this in public because that's a lot of money.
Well, I... Mr. Chair, if I can, I share your concerns. I believe you are correct. There is other development in the area that will utilize this light. Our traffic study did not show the requirement for a light based on sheer volume. When there's not enough traffic to trip or to trigger that new traffic signal, the county falls back to operational, operation and safety. So, they require the light based on not the traffic volume, but saying that it's an operational and safety issue. We tried to make the case that we should only be responsible for our proportionate share of that light. The county, again, the county staff's position is it's 100% ours because the other developments alone do not trigger that light.
Mr. Chairman, well, staff's not thinking through this. A 15-mile-an-hour school zone, look, whenever we need to come in and out of that school and our children and their parents are coming in and out of that school, and our school buses are coming in and out of school, we're gonna have people out there with little signs that says, stop. You know, so, I mean, I'm really, really, really bothered because you keep saying staff, county staff, county staff, county staff. This decision between two public boards needs to be dealt... Just like you, and I commend you for coming to us well in advance and keeping us informed because we are the decision-makers. And I will tell you, I for one, I'm gonna have a conversation, if you guys are out there watching, with each county commissioner that this doesn't make sense. And I had asked Commissioner Trace to do traffic counts coming out of Copperstone because I wanted to know how many cars are actually coming out of Copperstone during the hours where we're going to be bringing in our schoolchildren. And so, I mean, I'd like to see those counts too, but for us to expend this amount of money for a problem that doesn't exist according to the data, i.e., there's not enough traffic to justify it, and we know that the cars, they're not gonna need a traffic light because they're only gonna be going 15 miles an hour. Now, the truckers will probably not like it, but Madam Superintendent, I really... This is getting under my fingernails.
To follow up on what you said, the county's policy on flashing lights in school zones, it's 20 miles an hour, and it would be from property line to property line. So, their traffic will be slow.
There are counties that have 15-mile-an-hour school zones because of traffic, and I want those semi-tractor trailers slowed down well in advance.
But the point is, yes, you're correct, that all along there, the traffic will be slow during those times.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we're all through there. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I'm just sitting... You can tell, Mr. Pendley, I'm new at this. So, I'm just listening at these problems that seem to have been in existence for quite some time. And I guess I agree with Dr. Hope. Oh, my goodness gracious. Did I just say that? Yeah. I agree with Dr. Hope. It's kind of late that we are now being called upon to make such tremendous financial commitments for a project that has been planned so well in advance and so far along. How often do you come... Is this the first time we get a... It's a workshop. First time I've seen you in a workshop here.
I do try to avoid the board.
He's pretty busy.
Okay.
You try to. Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. When we permitted the school originally, which I'm gonna get my dates mixed up, but a year, year and a half ago, we had to do a traffic study at that point. When the County Commission approved it, they required that there be a traffic signal based on their county staff's analysis. But what it said was, we're responsible for our proportionate share. We have debated that with county staff over the last nine or 10 months, and they will not back off of the proportionate share is 100% ours.
I hear what you're saying.
So, it's not new?
No. What is new is that it's almost a fait accompli. It's a done deal. We're stuck now, and we're also gonna be stuck with it. And they went out and paid a half-million dollars for a light. And I'm trying to figure out, can you help me figure out how we avoid that? Because if you're gonna tell me, well, we have to go along with what the county says, I agree with Dr. Hope. I think we need to have a discussion, not between two staff people, but between two boards about how we're gonna treat each other. And that's what I'm...
I think that would be a good discussion.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Board Member Golden. Thank you, Mike. Well said. All right. I think that's... Where are we? Gosh. I gotta put up with this. Okay. We have a rendezvous with Destiny at 5:45. I think that's everything. Come before the board, and so this meeting will now be adjourned. Thank you.